The meeting is open.
Thank you.
Good evening, Azusa Community students, parents and staff. Welcome to our board meeting, Board of Education meeting. We are now on item 1.1. I would like to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Moving on to item 1.2, roll call. Board Member Bo?
Here.
Board Member Arianez?
Present.
Board Member Grum?
Here.
And Board Member Benavidas?
Here.
And I am present. Moving on to item 1.3, an approval of the agenda can have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Arianez. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Benavidas. Any discussion? Seeing none, please place your vote. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item 2.1, public comment on closed session agenda items. Hope do we have any blue cards? Kathleen? Hermina, come to the podium, please. I hope I said that right. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Board members. My name's Kathleen Hermida. I've been employed with Azusa Unified since 2016, the last three years at the DO as an Accounts Payable Clerk 3. I come before you today to appeal the decision to not reclassify my position to a lead account clerk. My decision to seek a reclass came as I reviewed the lead job description before participating in an interview panel. I had a meeting with my director, Brian Allen, who gave me his support and agreed that I was justified to submit the request. On April 19th, I received notification from HR that my request was not recommended. And on May 3rd, Mr. Ronquillo accepted my request for a meeting to answer my questions regarding the decision. During our meeting, Mr. Ronquillo stated that the job descriptions, both of them, have a lot of overlap, but that the distinguishing factor of a lead is that they are doing, quote, "advanced accounting procedures." Some advanced accounting tasks that I am currently carrying out that are not performed by other AP clerks here at the district office include the following. The first are journal entries, which are also known as JVAs, which stands for Advanced Journal Voucher. I process journal vouchers to charge departments for fuel and oil. I charge schools for transportation. I reclass payroll expenditures for the Facilitrom program. I process more journal entries than the current leads do. Please see the attachments to this letter that I gave you. In the second page, you will see how many I do in comparison to the other leads at the moment. I also invoice school sites and other organizations for transportation services. I monitor payments received and I submit checks for deposit. In the last five to six months, I have assisted in project management reporting. I have assisted in updating and maintaining spreadsheets, which outline school construction projects, outline school construction projects, the vendors for each project, the POs by vendor, the progress on the payments by the vendors and their POs. So these three points are what I believe to be advanced accounting procedures, as I am the only AP clerk here at the district that does these tasks. Section 3 of the Request for Reclassification notes that, this comment from HR, that the tasks that may have been performed outside of the classification should not have been regular and ongoing. Please note that all my duties, including additional ones, have been regular and have been ongoing for the last five to six months. So in closing, I want to emphasize that I enjoy my work here at Azusa. I give 100% every day, and this is evident by the fact that I have been nominated for Employee of the Year for the last three years, and I won it the last two. Not the last two, but two of those three. I'm a diligent worker and I'm always willing to help. I constantly look for ways to improve my work process and I freely share what I learn with my coworkers. I have assisted the accounting department for one year when they were short.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I stumbled. All right. Thank you for your.
Yes. We are moving to closed session. Our open session will begin at 7:00 PM.
The meeting is open.
Is there a public?
Yes, the meeting is open.
Thank you. Good evening, Azusa Community students, parents and staff. Welcome to our board meeting. Now we are on item 1.1. I would like to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 at 7:01 PM. We're moving on to item 1.2, roll call. Board Member Bo?
Sorry, Board President, we're on item.
Thank you. I was starting from the beginning. So now we're moving on to item 4.1, Pledge of Allegion. Can we have Kate Lee Cornwell, 5th grader student from Lee Elementary School? Please come to the podium.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Thank you very much, Kate Lee. Good job. We're moving on to item 5.0, Reports and Actions of Closed Session Matters. By the vote of 5-0, the Board adopted final settlement for Office Administrator Hearing, Case Number 2024010677, Student Number 23-24-01-30. We are now moving on to the day, Item 6.1, Recognition of Azusa Unified School District Students Who Placed in the ALX Lodge Drug Awareness Essay. We have it to Ms. Camacho.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Superintendent Cabinet and Attendees. We are thrilled tonight to recognize Azusa Unified students who placed in their respective categories in the ALX Drug Awareness Essay Competition and the ALX Americanism Essay Competition. The drug awareness theme this year was Be Kind to Your Mind, Live Drug-Free, and the Americanism theme was What the Bill of Rights Means to Me. As I call up students, if you would stand and be recognized up at the podium. First, from Gladstone Middle School, student Savannah Kendrick won first place in the Drug Awareness Essay Contest and second place in the San Gabriel Valley. For the Americanism Essay Contest, we have Jackson Medina from Valleydale Elementary. He placed third in his category as well as third place for the San Gabriel Valley. We also have we also have Alexia Lopez Martinez from Gladstone Middle School, who placed first in her category as well as the San Gabriel Valley. We also have Anika Kim from Gladstone Middle School, who also placed first place in her category as well as the San Gabriel Valley. We are so proud of you and the amazing recognition that you earned and that you bring to the Azusa Unified School District.
Board President? Board Member Arianez? Board Member Arianez?
Good evening, Azusa Unified School District. Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to all of you, Savannah, Jackson, Alexia, and Anika for participating and placing in the ALX Lodge Drug Awareness Essay Contest 2024. Today, May 7th, 2024, we recognize you for your excellent, excellent participation and representing Azusa Unified in our community. So let's give them another round of applause.
Do any Board Members have any comments? Board Member Grum?
Just congratulations. Thank you again. It's nice like tonight that I'm just blown away by the examples that we have in front of us for why Azusa is so strong. So thank you for being models of that.
Board Member Benavidas?
Yes, I would like to give my congratulations to all the students for their hard work and their dedication to making Azusa shine. Thank you again. We hope that you continue on a successful path. Thank you.
Board Member Bo?
Congratulations, students. Being a good writer takes a lot of hard work. It's not so easy to put sentences together. So we commend you for spending the time and for being recognized not only locally, but in the San Gabriel Valley. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I want to congratulate you, students. You're doing a great job. I know it's hard doing an essay, but it's a topic. It's a very important topic, and thank you very much for working on this important topic that everyone should read. Thank you. Send my colleagues back to the middle and the students here. We're going to take a picture, okay? Now we will be moving on to Item 6, Recognition of Azusa Rotary Four Way Speech Contest Winners. Mr. Ortega?
Thank you, Board President. I am honored tonight to be able to announce that the Azusa Rotary, on a yearly basis, hosts what's called a four-way speech contest. This contest is not only for Azusa, but the winners from Azusa get to move on and compete at different levels. This year's theme for the Rotary was Create Hope in the World. And we are here tonight to acknowledge some of the students that placed. So from Azusa High School, 11th grader, 4th place, Emmanuel Serato. If you can make your way to the podium, that'd be amazing. 3rd place from Azusa High School, 12th grader senior, John Tacucci. 2nd place, senior at Azusa High School, Hector Hernandez. And our 1st place winner, who not only won 1st place here, but then was able to compete in the regional competition, senior from Azusa High School, Emily Reese. This is, this is a speech contest. Speech, as we all know, is the number one college course that people avoid to get in front of others. And so to have students who have that determination to get up, right, and compete in front of others on a topic is to be applauded. So congratulations.
Board Member Benavidas?
First of all, I'd like to say that you may be sitting here one day, right, as public speakers. But congratulations. So Azusa Unified School District's certificate of recognition is proud is proud to present to Emily Reese, Hector Hernandez, John Tacucci, Emmanuel Serato for competing and placing in the 2024 Azusa Rotary Four Way Speech Contest. Congratulations again, students. Look around the room. Everyone's proud of you. Thank you.
Do my colleagues have any comments? Board Member Grum?
Well, I mean, I'm tempted to ask our speech award winners if they have any comments or if there's anything that they would like to say, but no, just congratulations again.
Board Member Bo?
In addition to writing, public speaking is one of the toughest things to do. So we applaud you and all your efforts, as well as your teachers and coaches that helped you along the way. Congratulations.
Board Member Arianez?
To echo what my colleagues have said, but you guys have no idea, just like Superintendent Ortega said, public speaking is the number one feared class in college, and you guys already have topped that. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to your parents for the support that they give you, because this is not just, it happens one night. It happens, you are dedicated. And with that, I see a bright future. And for you guys to go out into the world and say you guys are coming from Azusa Unified School District, thank you.
And what I'd like to say is, yes, it is hard to speak in public. I was there. I seen these students, and they all did a fantastic job. I'm really proud of you, and congratulations, Emily, for coming in first place. Thank you. If you would come to the center of the room, please. Okay, here we are for the big one here. Moving on to Item 6.3, Recognition of Azusa High School Athletic Teams Qualified for the CIF Playoffs. Mr. Fernandez, oh, you're already there. Okay.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Cabinet and Attendees. High privilege here to introduce our fall and winter athletes who were able to compete at the highest levels this past season in the first year, where we brought both of our student populations together. He's not here right now. We're still doing physicals over at East Campus, but we'd like to also pay a special shout out to A.D. Sanchez, who's done a phenomenal job, as well as all of our coaches here and all of their parents in supporting the athletic program. So once again, just huge shout out to all the hard work of our athletic director and our coaches to bring these teams together to compete. And in case you didn't hear, Azusa Baseball won 15-1 today, and they went on to round three this weekend or on Friday.
Board Member Bo?
Get ready, because it's a long list. Representing Azusa High School, we have cross-country, and as I call your names, team members, please come to the podium. Country, girls soccer, boys soccer, girls volleyball, girls wrestling, and boys wrestling. All the way up to the podium, so we can see you. Just to recap, that's six teams: cross-country, girls soccer, boys soccer, girls volleyball, girls wrestling, and boys wrestling. And we have team certificates for each of you that read, "Azusa Unified School District Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to your team for an excellent season showing outstanding sportsmanship and qualifying for CIF Playoffs, May 7th, 2024, signed by Superintendent Ortega and Board President Rodriguez Peña." Congratulations.
My colleagues have any comments?
Just said, I mean, what do we not do? Like, you are incredible. Thank you for, like, just your hard work, your dedication, and again, for being a reason why Azusa shines. So thank you.
Board Member Benavidas?
When I, when I, when we sit up here and we see all these students get recognized, whether it's speech, writing, or teamwork, right, especially in sportsmanship and being on a team, that tells me that, one, there's commitment, there's leadership, there's teamwork, we have good mentors, coaches behind you, and that, you know, you kind of get out of your shell because you become, your competitive nature, you know, and that's, that driving force is going to take you places. So continue to do hard work. Congratulations, and let's do it. Number one.
Board Member Arianez?
Wow, this is amazing. You know, being in, excuse me, being in sports and maintaining your GPA is not easy. I know that all of you guys wake up early, go to school, you're there all day, and then you, you, you follow your passion in whatever sport that you dedicate yourself to. So thank you for going that extra mile and representing your high school, Azusa High School, in wherever you go. So congratulations. Keep it up. Continue to be in sports, because I'll tell you, exercise and education go hand in hand. When you succeed in one, you succeed in the other. So congratulations again.
Congratulations, scholar athletes, for getting up early, staying out late, whether you play a team sport or an individual sport. We know it takes collaboration. We know it takes individual initiative. And so congratulations to you, your families, and all your coaches and teachers for an outstanding season. We can't wait to see what's next. Congratulations.
And I'd like to congratulate all you, all you students for putting us on the map. Every time I look at Facebook, Azusa High School, there's always a team winning, you know, somewhere. It can't be everywhere, but I've gone to some of the baseball teams, some of the basketball games, but I'm really proud of all you kids sticking to it, because it is a commitment, and it's something that sticks with you, your commitment and your ganas, right, that you want to win. And I hope we see you guys next year, and we're all going to be in first place.
I forgot to thank the coaches, the coaches that make all this happen. Thank you, guys. Coaches in the back, Miranda's, give them a round of applause. Thank you. And my, and my adoptive son, I haven't seen in such a long time, Albert. He's a unified alumni, so thank you, Albert, for coming back and giving back to your community.
So thank you, students. When I asked Mr. Fernandez if I could have the list of all the sports and where you're going to play, and he gave me like a 10-page thing, I mean, I was going through page over page, and you kids really do a lot, and then your studies too. So I'm really proud of your kids, and the coaches and your principal. I always see him everywhere, too. Thank you. If we can come to the center. How are we going to do this? Team by team, okay?
Yep. Right, I'll start with cross-country. Cross-country and the coaches, yes? Girls soccer, girls soccer. Boys soccer, boys soccer. Girls volleyball? Girls volleyball? Girls wrestling? Girls wrestling? And boys wrestling, boys wrestling?
And boys wrestling, boys wrestling.
Now we're moving on to item six point four, recognition of student board member Azusa High School. Student Emily Hernandez, Sierra High School student, student Mariah Santos, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, uh, Board President. Uh, tonight, uh, we're going to recognize Emily Hernandez and Mariah Santos. Although you only saw one uh, student board member here physically uh, at every board meeting. Uh, the other board, the other student board member uh, was still meeting uh, with us on Monday. Uh, when we got to talk about uh, what they were sharing, uh, went over the agenda, what was on the agenda, what it meant. Um, I remember uh, one of the first meetings, uh, the question was, you know, during their, their uh, comments. Um, if it was allowed for them to add their flavor and you know, and of course that's what it's for. And so. Uh, that was my, my indicator uh, that we had two very special uh, students uh, that were going to be with us uh, this school year. Um, the fact that uh, they're here, uh, they're in the evenings. Um, really speaks to their commitment and um, their leadership at their sites beyond uh, just being a student board member. Uh, is completely evident. And so I just want to personally uh, thank Emily and Mariah. Uh, it's been such a, such a fun. Uh, a fun year uh, spending with you guys. Uh, really appreciate it and congratulations.
And, and I have the honor of uh, awarding you this certificate. Azusa Unified School District Certificate of Recognition is proudly to present Mariah Santos. And Emily Hernandez for outstanding service as student board members on the Azusa Unified School District Board of Education. May seventh, twenty twenty four, signed by Superintendent Ortega and myself, Board President Inonda Peña. And I want to tell you students that you did a fantastic job. I know it took a while for you girls to write these up. She's posing. Yep, and um, you always do a good job. And yes, your, your input is very important to us and you. Did a real fine job in, in helping us through on some of the questions that we have. So if, um, any comments from my board colleagues?
Yeah, just want to say thank you ladies uh, so much for, as Board President said, providing your, your feedback, uh, sharing your perspectives. Um, providing us with updates, just so great, very grateful. Uh, not only that we have representation from our schools to do that, but that you two stepped up and chose to do um, just that. And so. Just congrats to just a great year and thank you for all you do. Um, I do need to give just one additional shout out only because I, I do happen to know Mariah a little bit. Uh, more because she, she comes and does all this here, but then she is also a beast of, of a center fielder. Out on the softball field with her sister as a killer shortstop, other sister as a killer coach. And mom who runs the, the league, helps to run the league basically. And so all that to say, just, just grateful for. Uh, an example that I get to see of, of what it looks like, just one example of, of a, a family that's in the, the community, serving the community. Um, at just at, at every level. And so congratulations to you, Mariah and Emily.
What member Benitez?
Congratulations ladies. We appreciate all the hard work and yes, you are valuable and your input matters. Um, thank you for being here and what you do, even if you're on, you know, online, it's all the hard work. That matters and that the value that you put into it because that's your work, right? And it just feels good to be able to have a student board representative because it really shows that Azusa district is. You know, puts, puts the time and effort to improve and to encourage their students. So thank you for all the hard work you do. I'm proud of you.
What member both?
Ms. Santos and Ms. Hernandez, congratulations. We are so proud to recognize you tonight and we're honored to share this dais with you. Um, not only for your comments during meetings, but also your professional memos. Um, really elevate uh, the voices of students. I know you've had input that has changed votes and influenced our thinking here. And um, I wish and I hope that this is just the first step of many in your career in public service. So congratulations.
What member Arianeis?
Thank you ladies for being dedicated to our school board meetings and being part of our team. As students, you represent your, 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 um, your friends and everybody at your school. And how you guys came and you guys were ready for the challenge. I see your determination, your passion. And your responsibility to your community. I hope this is not the first. But the first of many positions that you guys have in leadership, in, in leadership. And I can't wait to hear what your new endeavors have that will come your way. You guys, congratulations and good luck. As you guys leave us here in June, but you guys do leave a legacy. To your sisters, to your brothers and to your friends and to us. Thank you.
I, I also hope someday to see young ladies, your names on the ballot running for school board because you have the experience now, right? So we're going to come forward to the middle. Okay. We're going to take a picture. We are now moving on to item six point five, recognition of twenty twenty four, twenty five Azusa Unified School District Budget Book Cover winner Haley Murillo. If you can come to the podium. Not here? Or Mr. Maul, can you speak about it?
Yes, I will. So for the second year in a row, we were able to partner with um, Ed Services um, to select our budget book cover, which will be used for our twenty four, twenty five. Budget as well as our annual reports through the entire school year. Um, we have Ms. I'm going to share her artwork because it is gorgeous. And this will be our budget book cover with the theme of being grateful and Ms. Haley identified that she's grateful for her classmates, her teacher, the custodian, the secretary. Um, as well as the school bus driver and she's grateful for all of us at from Magnolia Elementary.
That's precious. What member group?
And so Haley, uh, we know that you are out there and so we want to thank you for your hard work. Um, and, and uh, grateful for uh, how you described all that you are grateful for and how that will be memorialized here. On our uh, budget cover here. And then we do have a certificate that we will make sure to get your way, which reads. Azusa Unified School District Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to you. Haley Murillo for winning the twenty four, twenty five Azusa Unified School District Budget Book Cover Contest. Of course, signed by Superintendent Ortega and Board President Rodriguez Peña.
Do we have any comments, any of my colleagues?
Yeah, I would. I want to say congratulations to Haley Murillo for the budget book cover. Um, one of the things I noticed last year is we had the same contest, right? Or. So I really like that the school district incorporates this um, this project into, you know, and, and partners with the. Students and things like that because I really feel that it's kind of like you're leaving an imprint of who you are. And it's always going to live forever because if you ever go online or whatnot, you're going to see something that you created. You're grateful for and that just speaks volumes. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for staff for also taking the effort to do that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations Haley for um, sharing with, sharing with us what's important to you. Um, art is a high form of expression of, of our values and the things that mean the most to us. So thank you for sharing what's important to you with all of us. Congratulations.
What member Arianeis?
Haley, if you could hear us, we are so proud of you for being chosen to be part of our budget. Um, cover and thank you for expressing your gratitude to your fellow students, your, your teachers, the custodians, the secretaries. And you're grateful just for everything that Magnolia in this district has to offer. And thank you parents and teachers who made this possible in administration. This really makes a big impact in all of our students.
So, so my question is, what grade is the student? And what school is she from?
She's from Magnolia and I think Ms. Lee is a third grader, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So all I like to say is um, Haley, you did a beautiful job. I, I like that. You put your really feelings into it, but not only that, you know, it helps you read the budget book a little more when you see this beautiful picture, right? Who wants to read numbers, right? But you see this real, how beautiful. So I have to be um, thankful also reading the book, I guess, but it's good. So, okay. Thank you. So, okay. So we're going to be moving on to item seven point one, public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. The Board of Education encourages public input. Board members are not permitted to respond to the public comments. A member of the staff will contact you if information is needed. Thank you for your participation. Individual participants is in participation in public speaking must adhere to the following guidelines. Speaker cards must be turned in to the board secretary. Or raise their, their hand while in Zoom by seven, ten or ten minutes after the meeting begins. No speaker may yield their time to another individual speaker. Speakers must be present when their name is called in order to be heard. Maximum speaking time is three minutes. Hope, do we have any blue cards? Okay. So um, then we have Andrew Kruger, please come to the podium. Hope I said your name wrong. Sorry.
Dear members of the board, I'm here on behalf of my students to discuss agenda item twelve point three, student safety and safety supports. The LCAP for next year states that quote, safe and restorative learning climates are an expectation and are essential for student success. I would like to talk about those current learning climates at Azusa High School. Let's start with the metrics. Currently, we measure school safety by using suspension rates and perceived safety. In the data presented in the LCAP draft, only thirty nine percent of high school families and forty six percent of students felt safe. Meaning a majority of students and families feel unsafe, yet we do not measure uh, what makes families and students feel unsafe. Other major metrics of safety were suspensions and dropout rates. Are parents and students afraid of suspensions and dropout rates? No. During Community Day on Friday, sixty seven students, which you can read if you want, chose to write about what they actually feel about school safety. And what makes them afraid. And I'll tell you, it's the fights, it's the gangs, it's the drugs and the weapons on campus. There have been so many fights that there are social media accounts that document the overwhelming amount. I have personally seen fights that encompass the entire west campus where even Azusa PD could barely hold back. Lockdowns were never called. The gangs fight amongst themselves with innocent students in the crossfire. Some of my own students will not return because their lives are threatened for not joining the gangs. Their recruiters target our most young and vulnerable and it happens on our campus without consequence. Kids have hidden in, from the gangs in my room and many leave the district outright. We create educational refugees that are begging to escape our district. Many times the escape is achieved with drugs. Students cannot even use the bathrooms because all the smoking and vaping, it's an open secret. And even more illicit drugs, drugs are on campus. A freshman in my first year here said sometimes they would buy drugs from students. And now that student is dead. They were fourteen. Aside from the drugs, guns are also on campus. Just on Friday, we received word that a gun was found on campus. There was no lockdown during the search. And we were not notified until four minutes before dismissal. Did we catch them? Were there consequences? Who knows? This is why parents and kids are afraid. This is why they leave our district. After reading the presentation uh, for safety supports, the vape sensors, cameras, smart passes, all these seem like an improvement. But what are the consequences for vaping and fighting on camera? Parents want consequences and accountability. In the LCAP draft, the district says practices like PBIS quote, will help students and suspension. Uh, help address the suspension and the perception of school safety. I, my colleagues, our students, our constituents do not care about being perceived as safe. We collectively care about being safe and tonight our community watches your reaction with this question. What will you do to make us safe rather than seeming safe? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arlette Torres. I'm a current eleventh grader at Azusa High and today I want to talk about why we shouldn't implement the block schedule into Azusa High School. I have thought about the effect of this new schedule during next school year and deeply fear for student mental burnout. As well as teacher mental burnout and this being the reason why so many of our current Azusa high schoolers don't attend Azusa High School next year. Me personally, who is a early college program student, requires me to sit down and pay attention for two hours. For one class, Monday through Friday, could not imagine standing through two more of those periods a day and being mentally okay. I am a very academically focused student and do not have trouble regarding maintaining good grades in those early college classes, but I. As well as many of my classmates in the early college program, attention spans falls out the window after first period ends, which says something. And by the end, most of the lecture we were taught is not retained after all. If you guys searched up how many knowledge is retained after a two hour high school class, the number is five percent. Which is humiliating if the objective of this new schedule is to learn faster and better. It is statistically proven that within one hour, fifty percent of the lectures forgotten and twenty four hours, seventy percent of the lectures forgotten. And ninety percent of the lectures forgotten after one week. Imagine how much information would be lost after not attending the same class for two semesters. It'd be like if we never attended the class, which would reflect badly on our teachers and the board members in this room. The acceleration of the classes would not only cause mental, even more mental exhaustion upon AP slash honor kids. But specifically an even larger amount among the kids that have regular classes that challenge them already. We may see our F grade rate be exponentially higher and higher, leading to even more mental exhaustion that leads to the contrary to the purpose of this new schedule. This also means even more existing absences and therefore less money for this school district. How would this positively look among the Azusa education system? If we are so invested in getting votes among teachers in this high school, teachers from our elementary schools and even middle school. In our district for this decision, then why won't you guys let the real ones who are being affected vote for it as well? It is clearly not fair that you guys have never tried to include our say among decisions like this and deeply advocate that you guys always include students say, which is a false statement because you guys have never. Considered us for these decisions and always silenced us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. You can, you can start.
Good evening, board members. My name is Alan Ramirez and I am a sophomore attending Azusa High School. As you can see, I stand before you with a group of students who believe we can voice our genuine concern regarding security and decisions made at Azusa High School. Even though, even after countless fights at Azusa High, I had faith that the school would do something. Good faith that the. school would do something. Good faith that the school cared about each student. I had good faith that we were safe under the school's protection. But I lost that faith the day I realized that kids brought guns to school. How can you guys let this happen? How can you expect us to learn even when we're worrying about our safety? How can I, a student, just wanting to learn and study, take care of such a huge problem? Now, let me answer this question for you. I can't. As, as, as far as I am concerned, it is not my job to fix it. It's between all you who need to fix it. If you have no idea what I'm talking about at all, I would like to give you some insights. I'm holding in my hand one of the six flip, six flash drives with videos of fights taken from social media so that I can show, finally make you understand what it is to be in our shoes. If you care so much as you say you do, please take one home. If, I'll be here to give out these flash drives to anyone who wants one. As you watch these at home, I want you to reflect, reflect on these questions. How does it feel to be powerless in this, in this environment? How does it feel to know that each student experiences this? Blood after fights have been a new normal for me. Seeing kids act out, come out with messed up faces and still pulling up their pants to fight has been an horrifying experience for me. But most importantly, I feel that seeing my best friend go into a fight is one of the most scarring positions I've ever had. I feel angered that you decided to merge the schools without adequately preparing for the consequences of your own actions. Even though it was your choice, we, the students, have to live with these consequences. I believe that we should not have, we should have more security. While we do have some security, they usually get late to fights and they cannot contain these fights as well. We need to hire more security guards and place them so they're not roaming around wherever they want to do. If these simple decisions are not made or enforced, then I and many other students will seriously consider transferring out of this district to another one that can better keep us safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gilberto Fasnera and JD Ontiveros Barron can stand behind him, please.
Good evening, board members. I'm Philberto Eli Costner Jr. I'm here today to talk about the safety of Azusa High School. As a student, I can offer insights that demonstrate to our district leaders that our school's safety procedures are ineffective and require improvement. Through my three years at the school, I've seen problems develop from bad to worse. I see everyday people blasting gang-related music in the mornings all around campus. I walk into restroom, seeing several students at a time smoking altogether while supposed security stands outside and only takes their backpacks. Not only smoking, but I've seen gangs marking restrooms and their territory. Every day, walking, I see several groups of gang-affiliated students wearing gang-related apparel, sporting weapons, threatening each other, and endorsing violence without consequence. They use this violence to intimidate us and our younger students. I've seen people I grew up with, once innocent, now dealing drugs and fighting because the gang recruit on our campus. These gangs' problems have spiraled out of control, and the school's efforts have failed to keep us safe. Moreover, these issues have affected us mentally. I've seen and heard many students tell one another our safety is at risk even just going to school. On campus, gangs pressure us to join and target us when we don't. The school exposes us to traumatizing violence and students having their hair ripped out, having their teeth knocked in, beaten bloody on the floor, students being jumped, stomped, scratched till bloody. Seeing these not only affect me, but I've seen it traumatize other students into thinking that they themselves can be put into the situation. Not only have I seen this with other students, but the organization's second call supposedly helps students with their problems. But the only thing I've ever seen them doing is hanging out with gang-affiliated students and acting like their buddies, allowing them to skip class, walk around, giving these students a sense of security and power over other students. Overall, safety at school for students is already compromised, and the choice made by our leaders have led to no improvement. I see this hoping that our district takes charge and does something about this, not only for me, but for other students and future generations of students being enrolled at the school, such as my little sister. Thank you all for your time. I hope you all take my speech into consideration of improving our school at Azusa High.
Thank you. Give it time.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jayden Tiberos Barron, and I'm a sophomore at Azusa High School. I will be addressing two topics today regarding my school's future block schedule and my school's disappointing security. To start off with my school's future block schedule, it would have an extremely poor effect on students. Some of us barely keep up with the curriculum in one year. What makes you think students will be able to maintain their usual pace in only half a school year? Not only that, either we exhaust ourselves every semester, or we just lose part of our standard education due to all the curriculum not being able to fit in one semester. This significantly lowers the quality even more of my education and won't help students at all. You make these striking changes and once again ignore my safety and the safety of everyone at Azusa High School. If you weren't aware, last week, a student possessed a gun at Azusa High School. This shows once more that you have all failed to protect me and other students. You don't represent my voice or the voice of other students. We had to come over here and speak up for ourselves. It infuriates me that I don't feel safe at my school, and my mom has to worry about my safety while I'm in school. You implement things at my school like lock blocks, which believing that you think will keep me safe. It's ridiculous as to how this will keep me safe against the major threats at my school. Not only that, every time I use a restroom at my school, I have to breathe the toxic chemicals that come from the vapes and drugs used nonstop. This is insane. You don't do your job in providing the students with the safety necessary to succeed. Clearly, you need a 15-year-old to remind you of your duties and to show you how unsuccessful you've been in keeping me and other students safe. I'm utterly let down by how you have done your jobs. After 11 years in this district, it would reject me to leave, but I'm sick of waiting for you to take action on my behalf. I know I can freely go to another district, which will assure me of my safety and education. Everyone in the Azusa district should have the opportunity to feel safe and protected in their schools. I hope you all come to your senses and take the obvious measures needed to refine my school. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, um, is Rebecca Trujillo, or we have, what is your name, young man?
Luis Rebecca Trujillo.
Luis. I know. Oh, oh, Luis Rebecca Trujillo. I'm, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, board members, teachers, students, staff, and everyone else who is here tonight. My name is Luis Rebecca Trujillo, and I'm a former Azusa Unified School District student who went to Azusa High School up until this semester when I transferred schools. During my time at Azusa, I took note of many things that could have been improved on in favor of all who attended the school. One of these things was making sure people who went there, either to work or to receive an education, could feel safe enough to want to actually go. Over the course of a year and a half, I, as a student, have heard of and witnessed lots of fights, arguments, and other altercations that made me feel less and less defended. Even though these disputes have already been dealt with, that does not mean there will be an end to them. The reason as to why I no longer attended Azusa High School was that up until a couple of months ago, when the lies of both my family members and myself were threatened by a student who continues to go to Azusa, I realized that I did not feel secure enough to attend the school anymore. Because of the lack of safety I felt going to school and our knowledge of how gang-related this person is, my parents thought it would be best for me to move schools for, for the time being. Even now, as things have cooled down with our situation, my family and I were considering making plans for me to return to Azusa next year. However, with all of the more recent incidents and things I had heard of going on at the school, I am not so sure about making my comeback here. Also, as a new student at Northview High School, I have begun to hear students and alumni talk about Azusa. None of what is talked about is good or positive, that I can assure you all. I cannot stress enough that although I do not go to Azusa anymore, I still fear for the well-being of my friends, family, and basically, basically everyone else that continues to go there. As a community, we ask of you, board members, to please take into consideration the safety of all who, who go to Azusa High School now, and even the safety of future Azusa High students. If both you, members, and others who also feel similarly about their school were to work together, we can come up with new ways to ensure a more safe and enjoyable learning environment for everyone. I'm sure everyone here agrees that as head of the district, you are entitled to make me and all the other teachers, students, and workers feel like they are in a comfortable and safe learning zone. Now we're one where they're in constant fear of being attacked, falling victim to these brutal fights, or worse. One of the many ways, one of, one of these ways could be to possibly add more security to both campuses, or give more effort on locating and intercepting the students who can become a danger to others. This is just some of the possibilities that we all accept and recognize as effective and believe are achievable as long as we have the support of all who care for our, about our protection. Please, board members, I beg of you to take this problem into a deliberation so we can take action now. Thank you for your time, and may you spend your evening well.
Thank you. Uh, can we have, uh, Elizabeth Casillas?
Good evening, board, good evening, members of the board and fellow community members. My name is Elizabeth Casillas, and I am a sophomore at Azusa High School. I am here today to voice my concerns about the extremely pressing issue that myself and my peers are facing, but many are apprehensive to speaking up about. The new bell schedule that is to be implemented next year does not take into account student and educator needs in the slightest. This new schedule that is meant to increase class time and reduce the amount of time us students spend crossing campuses will end up doing quite the opposite. By simply taking a look at the specific details of each schedule, you would realize that in implementing this new schedule, our class time would actually be reduced, which is quite the opposite of what it claims to do. Taken straight from the memorandum of understanding, the new bell schedule claims to maximize student instructional time. This is to be done by switching from six 55-minute classes a day with the same classes all year to four 85-minute blocks a day with different classes each semester. One class that should take all year in the current schedule would take one semester to complete according to this new schedule, not taking into account advanced placement classes. Seeing this, one would think that meant block schedules would be double the amount of the current schedule, making the new blocks 110 minutes. As I stated beforehand, this is not the case, meaning class time will be reduced by almost 30%. How is 30% less class time beneficial to students or educators? How are students and educators meant to manage classes with 30% less time? Are we expecting students to learn 30% faster? Because as a student myself, I know that will result in pure memorization and no true learning. I can't imagine how much stress that would bring upon our already overworked educators, or educators meant to cut out 30% of their curriculum. Our educators should not have to suffer due to the merge that no one truly wanted. Seeing all of this as a student makes me wonder, is our school board the one that comes up with these changes truly interested in the education of the students in our community? Or are they simply interested in getting kids through classes and on to the next? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Meg Zavala. She's online. Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Meg.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, good evening, board members, cabinet, audience. I am Meg Zavala, the president of the local teachers' union, Azusa educators. First, I want to applaud the students that are speaking. I, you are very eloquent and have brought to light things that, um, are crucial in the safety of our students. I have the intention right now of trying to suggest some solutions. They may or may not be the most, um, pressing at the moment, however, I think that they can lend to long-term improvement. First, I think that we need to have official safety committees at every school site. Currently, we do not. Administrators create the safety plans and present them to their school site councils, which either rubber stamp them or approve them just as a function of their committee. Those plans are not, uh, shared with the staff members at every site. They're not shared with necessarily the, the student or the community. We're told, oh, you can look them up online, when really there should be some active participation. The next thing I'd like to suggest is that the safety committee for the district, I, one, applaud, um, Latasha Jamal for creating this safety committee and for putting her best foot forward to try and get input from the different stakeholders. However, part of the format of this is to submit questions ahead of time, sometimes a couple of weeks ahead of time, and quite frankly, things come up between then and the time of the meeting. Also, we're not allowed to ask questions specific to the school site. The kids are not, the parents are not. This is supposed to be a district-wide committee and function, and I think that this needs to be an avenue, um, from which the students and parents and staff members can ask questions about site-specific issues. Also, I think that it would be imperative, it's imperative, that school board, a school board member sit on this committee. We have had school board members sit and participate in other committees and other meetings, and I think that this one is crucial. And last, this is not going to come as a surprise to you, very specific to Azusa High School, the union has been advocating for more administration. They need another assistant principal there to help deal with security, discipline issues, and so on. And lastly, with Azusa High, I'd like to say that there need to be more severe or significant consequences. The kids there know they're not going to get in trouble for the vaping in the bathroom and the smoking and the fighting, that there is not, and part of that is because the administrators are just spread too thin. They need help. And so I implore you to consider these suggestions that I think could significantly improve what's going on in the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Sonia Smith.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, um, board members, cabinet, and Azusa community. Uh, my name is Sonia Smith, and I'm a parent of students at both Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School. Um, I'm eager to listen to tonight's presentation on school safety and the plans for implementation. Um, as you all know, especially this evening with all of the students and teachers that have spoken, this has been a challenging year for school administrators, students, teachers, and parents at both the middle school and high school sites in terms of disruptive behavior, um, from students such as the fights in the classroom and on school grounds. Um, and one of the things that I've noticed is that our school site administrators are stretched thin and have not been able to focus their attention on other programs, or, uh, because they're constantly called to focus their attention on these behavioral issues. Um, classroom disruption is also being disrupted because of this issue. Uh, these past couple of weeks, I've had some great discussion with other ASU, ASU, ASUSD parents, and we're finding ourselves frustrated with what feels like repetitive conversations with our children about disruptive behavior in the classroom and on school grounds being normalized. Um, it's also frustrating because we all know, um, that we have really exciting programs and opportunities for our students, and they've been overshadowed by what appears to be, you know, the disruptive behavior consuming the school culture at both the middle school and the high school level. I'm asking, um, that you consider creating a position for an assistant administrator or dean, um, of discipline at each site, one at the high school, one at the middle school level, who will focus their attention on assessing, assisting, and following through with students who need either, whether they need social services, counseling, or placement and alternative, um, methods of education outside of those school sites. Um, and then they'll be able to address the disruptive behavior directly, quickly, and with follow-through, um, so that the other school administrators can get back to focusing on creating that positive school culture, um, and that learning environment for our students. By addressing this situation, you will bring back the competence of parents, of students in the district, and you're also listening to our concerns, but not just listening, taking action. Um, like the students said, they're frustrated, parents are frustrated. Um, you know, we, we choose to stay in this district because of all the great opportunities, and we really want to stay in this district. So we really do hope that you take some action. Again, thank you for your time and thank you for your, uh, consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Okay, we are moving on, on to item 8.1, comments, inputs, and requests by Board of Education. Board Member Bo.
Thank you, Board Member Bo. Um, I wanted just to refer you on an event that I attended last week at Gladstone Middle School. I was fortunate to be able to participate in the culminating performance of the 4C Lab, and I was joined by a couple of colleagues here. Um, an amazing culminating performance, um, with multimedia of dance, of spoken word, and a video. Um, so shout out to that program. Um, also, just, uh, two, uh, recognitions. Uh, today is Teacher Appreciation Day, and I know this is, um, comes in the middle of Teacher Appreciate, Appreciation Week, so I wanted to acknowledge all the teachers and educators out there that are, um, on the front lines and for all the work that they do behind the scenes. And then finally, last, um, recognition, um, May is both Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, as well as Jewish Heritage Month. So just want to, um, offer that acknowledgement of all the contributions of many Americans to the fabric of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Arianez? Thank you. Board Member Ariana.
I would like to again congratulate all of the students that we recognized tonight. Um, it takes a lot to go the extra mile and just not, you know, do your uh uh just your education, so congratulations again to to all the students. Um, one of the things that I want to remind everybody, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, it is really important, parents, teachers, administration, um as we know, it starts to get hot. Um, it's really important that uh parents and admin, you know, and staff, um you guys are in communication. If you guys have any uh any concerns, you guys address them right away. Um, but also, you know, I heard uh earlier tonight that uh the communication, right? It's it's really, really important for us to have communication. Um, and as we're coming closer to the end of the year, um let's get ready to end on a good note. Because I've been in this district and I do want to reassure you, I've been part of this district for forty-five years as a student in the classroom, as a coach, and now I sit on the board. I've seen this district transform, and we've had issues. And moving forward, I believe in this district, I believe in our administration, and I believe that being proactive is the best approach and having uh evidence-based practice put into into practice um in motion. Uh, moving forward, uh congratulations to all the students that are going to graduate this year. Um, I'm so excited for you guys. Uh, you guys are going to go into college, or if you guys are going to go to a vocational school or whatever you do, I wish you the best in your new endeavor. You guys take care. Thank you.
Board Member Greer.
Yeah, again, congratulations to all of the the students and their families that were recognized uh this evening. Um, just just grateful for all the the hard work that absolutely goes beyond the classroom that was that was recognized here. Uh, also want to thank the the everyone and students in particular for for coming uh this this evening and and sharing your uh your heart and your perspective uh as as it was shared earlier during, due to the the nature of of our meetings, we we don't we don't uh take take direct response to the things that you're saying, but but I I know that I can speak on behalf of not just myself, but colleagues in the district and say that we appreciate your perspective um and that we hear you, and thank you for for taking the time to come and share your your perspective um and and experiences with us this evening. Um, in addition to that, yeah, congratulations and 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 just hip hip hooray to all of the 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 uh the various things that we are celebrating and recognizing this month, um whether it's it's our educators. Um, also, uh recognizing that it's Asian American Pacific Islander uh Appreciation Recognition Month and and Jewish uh heritage as well. So just grateful for the the contributions to to us as a as a country, us as a society, and us as a world. Um, last couple of things, one, I continue to hear over and over again from from my daughter and others about the wings at Gladstone Middle School. And so the apparently the there are some hot wings. Hot hot wings, edible hot wings.
Oh, gosh.
I continue to to hear about that, so uh as as I hear about some of those things, just kind of want to want to pass that along that whoever is doing the wings is doing something right. Um, and 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 so maybe at at some point, that's something that I may have to go to experience it myself because I keep hearing uh some of some of her friends uh talk about uh these wings, uh but but just I I know that that's been a push for us is is to look at um in addition to delicious food, but having having food that is fresh um and and having food that is that is freshly prepared. Um, and so just just want to uh give those those kudos uh as well along the way. And lastly, we're in the home stretch uh here at the end of the year. So yes, as as Board Member Ariana said, let's let's finish strong uh and even for students as you're just looking ahead at the the end of the year, thinking of the things that you got to get done and 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 for teachers as well and and others where it just kind of seems like s- summer is 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 both so very close and so very far. Uh, just want to uh encourage you to uh to to finish strong, to stick with it um and and give your absolute best here um a- at the end, whether it's you're finishing first grade or whether you're finishing up here in AUSD as a as a twelfth grader. Um, but we're uh we're we're proud of you and and finish strong.
Board Member Benavides.
Yes, um, on on April twenty-fourth, um, I attended a short practice run for the Four C Lab performance. I'm a creative visionary. Home is where the heart is. The co-founder and director is Mar- uh Marissa Herrera. So I just want to say that um that short run, there was a few students there and it was it was really nice being there because um I was able to see the creative nature and, you know, artistic nature as well in all the students and how they really, um, they're empowered really to, you know, they kind of dig with within oneself and really um kind of bring that to the forefront and really express who they are, and I thought that was um really inspirational to me to see that students have that nature in them, that we're doing something to move that forward, and I want to say congratulations to those students and um the co-founder of that, Marissa Herrera. And that same day, I also had the opportunity to attend Gladstone Middle School um Community School Advisory Council Meeting where Mrs. Lorena Alice presented to administrators, teachers, staff, and parents on the result of the ANA survey. And um how they, what she did was she gathered input regarding the goals and action steps for Gladstone Middle School as it's moving forward to put together an implementation plan. And what I learned that day is that not just Gladstone Middle School, but other other schools are also going to be submitting an implementation plan and um and bringing that forward to the board. But most importantly, and I I I want the students to know that spoke here tonight on safety is that your words don't go unnoticed. You know, we we take notes, it's important to us that you feel safe. And and just like Board Member Greer said, due to the nature of the structure of the meeting, we can't give feedback, but know that that we are listening. We will make changes, and you matter. You matter. So sometimes in in small bureaucracies, big bureaucracies, things take time because you have to agendize things, we have to discuss, deliberate. So, but we're listening, and and you matter, your safety matters. Um, but thank you for sharing your thoughts tonight. And um so that day, at the Gladstone uh Middle School Community School Advisory Council Meeting, I just want to say this, that safety was a one of the main topics there for most of the parents, the administrators. So that is on the top of our agenda. It just, like I said, it just takes time, but um know that we are listening. And that was a great meeting, and to know that we're doing something to move things forward was inspirational to me. Something I would love to see more of, and I understand parents' work, is to see more parents involved because we need to hear their voices. Uh, and then on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, I attended Sierra High School Ceremony um at Universal Studios with um President Board Member Yolanda Peña, where Sierra High School was awarded the Model School and Exemplary Program Award from the California Department of Education. Um, Principal Teresa Peterson was there and her team, her staff, teachers, and it was a great event. It's it's kind of like um Board Member, President Board Member Peña said earlier, it's all your hard work that puts Azusa on the map, and we're so grateful for you, we owe you safety. So um you're important to us. And also, on last Thursday, I also had a chance to attend, as uh Board Member Sabrina Bo said, the performance by Four C Lab at the Little Theater at Gladstone Middle School. And as I stated earlier, it was great to see all the creative nature of our students, and it's just really good to sit up here and see everything that the students do. We're so proud of you, and thank you for being a voice for our community. Congratulations also to all the students, and we look forward to your graduation ceremonies. Thank you.
So um I I just wanted um thank you, students, for coming out tonight. I think it's really important that we hear from students because you students are on the campus. We're not there, right? So it's great that you come out and let us know what's going on, how we can help you, this is why we're here. But I really, I'm very proud of all of you coming out and taking a stance, because that's what you need to do, you need to stand up for what is right. And if someone is bothering you, you know, it's kind of the, you know, see something, say something, that's exactly what you're doing. And I'm so proud of all you students coming up here and having the guts to do that, because I know it's a lot. But that was, that's great. I I applaud you, young children. Um, also, I um I I'm a ROP Board Member, and um we awarded the twenty-two San Gabriel Valley ROP Educational Foundation Winners. Six students from each district were awarded five-dollar scholarships. Um, Azusa Unified School winner was Brandon Bravo from um Azusa High School in graphic arts, and his teacher is Jim Hague. Sierra High School, I did attend the Model Continuation High School, I want to thank Principal Teresa Peterson, students, staff, and it's all of you that got that award. Not just the school, not the board, not the district, it was all of you, students, parents, admin, and staff members. And it was a job well done, you put us back on the map because we did have the award before, and then a couple of years we didn't get it, maybe it was a pandemic, I'm not sure, but anyways, you brought it back and and I was very proud to be there. Um, the Four C Lab, Home is Where the Heart Is, students had ten-week session working together. They had a great performance by the students from Gladstone Middle School and Azusa High School on on evening of storytelling, music, theater, dance, multimedia. I would like to thank Marissa Herrera, co-founder, executive artistic director of Four C Lab. I'm so proud of her, I've known her since high school. She's um, you know, her dream was to come back to Azusa, she didn't have to come back to Azusa and do this. She got a grant from the um Canyon City Foundation here in Azusa, and she wanted to use that money uh to work with our students here at Azusa Unified. She's um, was a graduate of Gladstone High School. So I I'm proud of to see Marissa really making a difference. And um I went to a boutique, it's just a high crochet club, had a booth with their beautiful work. I wanted to show, I brought this because I wanted to show you people what the um, look at how beautiful. Isn't that cute? I didn't know they had a crochet club, but my friend was telling me that they, hey, the girls are over here selling stuff, so I go and look, look how beautiful this is. And this bouquet was done, each student kind of did a different flower, not, it's not from one student. They all kind of took the time, and there was a young lady there wearing a sweater that she knitted. I was really impressed, so I had to bring this to show everybody how beautiful they are. I can order if anyone wants any, I'll let them know. Then I went to Longfellow and Murray, students, they danced La Raspa, and that brought some, brought brought some memories of my children. Um, Dance La Raspa, it was so cute. Um, Azusa Community Schools Family Cumbia Night. Uh, again, great food, great music, great company. I want to thank community specialists, Laura Clark, Community Liaison Salon, Elizabeth Thains, parents, and all the employees that got together and had a great evening there, and they all worked together, so, and Principal Fernandez was even there dancing, no, he wasn't, I'm just kidding. And um CSCA, this Saturday, went to CSCA recognition for twenty-four award banquet. Congratulations to Noe Falcon, from Azusa High School, he's a site representative. He's actually campus security, but he's also the sergeant of arms and part of the negotiating team. So well deserved, and thank you for all you do for our classified employees. And I want to tell our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Jamal, I did notice the signage, and it's beautiful. The signage where it says where the boardroom at, right? I want to thank you for that, it it looks really nice. And I want to congratulate all this folks team and Happy Teacher Appreciation Month. Thank you.
So we are now moving on to um item nine point one, comments and reports, Board Members, Cabinet and Cabinet, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Board President. Uh, Lika, do we have Emily online? Oh, Emily's in person. Come on up, Emily.
Um, okay, good evening, board, community, and family members. To begin this report, Azusa High School would like to show appreciation to all of our teachers in the AUSD District during Teacher Appreciation Week. AHS has activities lined up this week to celebrate our teachers as we start to wrap up this school year. Azusa High School would also like to congratulate the Bad Men in softball and baseball teams who have made it to the CIF playoffs this spring. Baseball and Bad Men in won league titles this year. The baseball team won their first CIF game against Santa Rosa Academy last Thursday and played a second-round CIF game against Academy of Career Exploration at Azusa Field on May seventh. Unfortunately, Bad Men in season ended with a playoff loss against Roland High School, and softball's playoff journey ended with against Valley Christian High School last week as well. Nonetheless, we are still very proud of our student athletes for their dedication this season. On a more positive note, Azusa High School seniors are relishing in their college acceptances. So far, we have heard back from sixty-two athletics who have been accepted into four-year universities. Among the college, among the colleges, the class of twenty-twenty-four has been accepted to include Yale, Stanford, Brown, LMU, USC, APU, University of Laverne, Cal Baptist University, multiple UCs such as LA Riverside, Davis Berkeley, San Diego, Irvine, Santa Barbara, and many Cal States such as Cal Poly Pomona, Cal State LA, Cal State Long Beach, Fullerton, Northridge, Bakersfield, Cal State San Bernardino, and many, many more. Way to go, class of twenty-twenty-four. Additionally, Azusa High School Student Union members will be hosting their second Student Union Summit on May thirtieth at the Maxwell House in Pasadena in conjunction with the Western Justice Center. Students will be working on a constitution, developing student-centered activities for next year, celebrating accomplishments, and refining Azusa's community-building practices to enhance the student sense of belonging at AHS. On the topic of community, Azusa High School Community School Program is hosting a parent workshop in conjunction with the Natural History Museum of Los Angeles on May fourteenth and nine AM. The workshop will focus on improving communication with youth, and all parents are welcome to attend this workshop at Azusa High School West Campus. Next, Mr. Fernandez would like to thank Azusa High School parents, the Community School Program, Mrs. Carbajal, Mrs. Gomez, Miss Enriquez, Mrs. Clark, Miss Sains, Mrs. Librado, Mrs. Alvarez, and Mr. Gonzalez, and the fabulous DJ for putting on a wonderful cumbia night on May third. We were so glad to see families and AHS students dancing and celebrating community together. Finally, AHS would like to invite parents and community members to Azusa's music program performances. The first band and choir concert is on May eighth at six-thirty at the Azusa Gym. Secondly, the Azusa Orchestra Piano Guitar Spring Concert will take place at the Azusa Senior Center on May fifteenth at six-thirty PM. We hope to see everyone there. And lastly, as my final comment, I would just like to add that although it is so important to highlight all the good that is happening in Azusa High School, um my report seems like a facade compared to all of the strong comments that were said by my peers tonight. And so as this school year is closing and the new one is going to start soon, I ask of you, the board, to reflect and redirect on our safety and the security measures at Azusa High School. Um, it's just so important that we get the basic safety of the students to be insured for everyone. So with that, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Emma.
Mariah.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Ortega and Cabinet. As always, it's a pleasure to be here representing Sierra High School. Since the last meeting, I am happy to share that on Friday, April twenty-sixth, our Principal Miss Peterson, Counselor Miss Solusano, and Teacher Mr. Lemunyan accepted the Exemplary Program Award on behalf of our school. They also presented at the CCEA Plus Conference to share with other alternative education schools the benefits of having AP programs and the steps necessary to start one at their own schools. I'm happy to know that I not only benefit from these programs, but that Sierra is also sharing the information with other schools so even more students can benefit. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at Soundstage Fifteen at Universal Studios Hollywood, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board Member, Board Member Benavides, Miss, our principal, members of the Sierra team, my mom and I, were able to attend the California Department of Education and CCEA Plus Award Gala. It was an amazing opportunity to be part of accepting Sierra's model awards, school award, and was definitely a night to remember. On Monday, our AP government class took their AP exam. My classmates and I really put a lot of time and effort into preparing for this exam, and I am beyond proud of them. I want to thank Mr. Lambright and our other AP government teach, AP program teacher, Mr. Gafari, for believing in us and guiding us through the AP programs this year. It was amazing to know that Sierra is one of the view, very few alternative schools that have AP programs so we can have this experience. Last week on Wednesday during lunch, our Sierra Community Schools teamed up, teamed up to set up a prom dress giveaway. Students had the opportunity to go to our NPR to try on some prom dresses and find the perfect one to take home for free. This was a great opportunity to help Sierra students shine on their special night. On Sat- on Saturday, May eleventh, from ten AM to two PM, Sierra Student Leadership will be having a car wash to help our Sierra Student Leadership will be having a car wash to help our school fundraise money for our senior sunset. These funds will be used for food, refreshments, and games to help make our senior sunset even more fun and memorable. I'm looking forward to all the senior activities lined up for this month with prompting the first event followed by the senior awards, senior social, Sierra Senior Sunset, and so much more. We are definitely in the home stretch. Thank you and go Spartans.
Thank you, Mariah. Um, I want to get in the parade of, uh, thanking and recognizing and congratulating all of our student winners today. Our Alx Lodge essay winners, our speech contest winners for Rotary, our sports teams, our art winner Haley, and of course Emily and Mariah. Uh, congratulations and thank you for that. I want to congratulate, uh, Lika Juarez, uh, Director of Communications, uh, for winning a scholarship uh, through the California School Public Relations, uh, better known as CALSPRA. Um, she applied for a scholarship and won the opportunity to attend the CALSPRA conference this summer. Uh, they're going to pick up the flights, the hotel, and the registration for the conference. Uh, I want to wish everyone a happy certificated week, uh, this week and a happy classified week next week. Uh, we want to thank, uh, all of our laborers, uh, who work with us, who partner with us, uh, all in the name of educating, uh, and growing our students. Uh, so thank you for that. And then I just want to also congratulate Noe Falcone, uh, was able to attend on Saturday. Uh, he, uh, particularly won the Unsung Hero Award. And so nice to have Azusa represented in that manner, uh, at this CSCA Awards Ceremony. Congratulations, Noe.
Thank you. Um, also want to echo all of the congratulations to all of our students, um, tonight. Um, also want to recognize our certificated employees this week and classified employees next week. We are so grateful for all that you do. Um, I do want to highlight tonight the Azusa Aztec Podcasting Program started by Mr. Hague and the Aztec Film and Media Club. They have a total of twelve, twelve teams of talented podcasters who have created more than two hundred episodes, reaching fifty nations worldwide. Next year, they hope to have more. Um, several teachers have used the podcasts, uh, for collaboration projects with Mr. Hague's class. Um, so we are very proud of, of the work of those students.
I would like to also echo, um, congratulations, um, to all of our certificated staff this week. And as we prepare to, um, congratulate all of our classified staff next week, um, I do want to make, um, two corrections. So Ms. Haley, my friend, um, she's a first grader and I said she's third and I got the text message to correct that. So yes, Ms. Haley's a first grader with her first grader with her beautiful arts. So I do want to correct that. Uh, and then also I want to give, um, Ms. Lika and Brian Allen, um, the credit for the board signs. Um, I just helped facilitate and give a funny source, um, but that was the hard work for them. Um, and then also just remind everyone, we're getting ready for open enrollment. Um, that will start off in June and open enrollment for medical benefits will go from June to August. Um, we'll have both virtual appointments as well as in-person appointments. Um, we are also knee-deep in budget development as we get ready, um, to bring our adopted budget and our LCAP to the board education. We'll be participating in the May revise, um, where we find the next level of preliminary numbers, um, from Governor Newsom on how we'll be funded for next year. And then lastly, I would like to just say to all the caregivers and the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day coming up.
And also, good evening. And I also want to join the, uh, parade of congratulations for our wonderful students. Um, and also recognize and, um, our teachers for their hard work each and every day um, on this certificated appreciation week. And also recognize that our classified employees' work, um, really helps make a lot of what we're able to, um, throughout the district. Also, thank you, classified employees, and I hope you have a very, very nice classified employee week. I also want to report that our HR team members participated in the Citrus College and Mount Senate College fairs over the last couple of weeks. Our team members interacted with students and alumni and were able to share our available positions, um, that we have here throughout the district. So we are really ramping up how we recruit and we really advertise our positions and really getting out to those, uh, to those job fairs. And, um, I'll be happy if there's more to come on that front. And then lastly, I'm happy to report we have, um, had our first blue immersion Mandarin teacher sign a contract last week. Um, and we also received an oral acceptance of a position from a second who happens to be out of the state. So we'll be looking forward to have the, um, the teacher also sign a contract, um, in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now we'll be moving on to item ten point one of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Board President. Um, I would like to pull item ten point six if that's possible.
Um, yes, ten point six. Okay, we have a motion, uh, on the floor. Do you want to amend your motion with the exception of item ten point?
I will amend my motion. I'm sorry, say it again.
You wanted to pull item ten point.
Yeah, uh, motion, if I may suggest, motion to approve the consent with the exception of ten point six.
Yes, motion to approve with the consent of ten point six.
The exception.
The exception of ten point six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, first by Board Member Ariana, second by Board Member Greer. And we did pull an item, so can we place our votes, please? Motion passes five zero. Now we're moving on to item eleven point one. Can I have a motion?
Um, I move to approve eleven point one.
Sec.
First by Board Member Bow, second by Board Member Ariana. Any discussion? Board Member Bow.
Thank you, Board. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, I have a question about, um, one of the terms of termination of contract on page two. I'll give you a moment to pull that up. It talks about, um, the ability of the city to terminate with or without cause, um, with or without notice. Um, whereas the, the district, um, must provide thirty days written notice only for failure of the city to perform its services. Um, it seems to me that, that, um, if that were to happen, if the city were to unilaterally terminate the contract, um, that that would leave a gap in services for our students who are, and our families who are depending on those summer, summer activities. Can you tell us about, um, why those termination clauses are not the same for both parties?
That is a, excuse me, that is a good question, Dr. Bow. Um, I do not know, uh, the answer to that question and I'm not sure if Assistant Superintendent Norma Camacho knows. Uh, she's the one that worked on this contract. So I'll turn it over to her, uh, to see if, uh, if there's a, there's a response to that.
It is the, um, contract that we've signed the last, um, two summers with them, but I can investigate it further.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second. Can we place our votes? Motion passes for, for yes and one no. Now we're moving on to item twelve point one, presentation of social media use of Board of Education members. We have someone on, on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, um, Board President, Rodriguez Peña. Um, we are moving on to a presentation, uh, regarding social media and Board of Education members. Uh, this was a red, this was a request, uh, from, uh, the Board of Education to have, uh, this presentation. Uh, on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Supreme Court of the United States, uh, issued a decision uh, which impacts, uh, a school board member's ability to control their social media. So I am very honored to, um, introduce Gretchen Shipley. Um, Gretchen is, uh, with our legal firm F three and, uh, she will be, um, conducting a short presentation and of course uh, be available for, uh, questions, uh, regarding, um, this, uh, decision and how it impacts, uh, social media. Uh, Ms. Shipley.
Thank you so much. And please let me know if there's any concerns about the audio. Um, I am thrilled that you all requested this topic. I will be respectful of your time and keep it brief. Um, is the audio okay?
Just one second. We're going to try to, uh, raise the volume in here.
Okay. Maybe just let me know when you're ready for me to continue. If I talk louder, is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, maybe so.
Okay. How is this?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and I'll just, I'll speak loudly and as clearly as I can. Um, thank you. I, I want to be respectful of your time. I know you have a packed agenda. Um, please, you know, let me know if, if the volume, volume continues to be an issue, but I'll just continue on. Um, I represented F three and I myself represented the California School Board Association before the Supreme Court on this particular issue. We wrote the brief. We attended oral argument at the Supreme Court. So, um, I wanted to provide you all with a very brief overview and then give you the opportunity to ask questions. Um, being a Supreme Court level case, it is a bit complex. So I tried to boil it down as basic as possible. And I have prepared a, a short, uh, PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if you have the ability to see it, but I was going to go ahead and try to share my screen if that, um, if that was possible on your end.
We can also put it up for you if you prefer. Uh, we have the presentation in our possession as well.
Um, oh, I made an abbreviated version just for you all. I'm not sure what, um, let me see here. I will do a screen share. Are you able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Great. Okay, I'll get started and I, and I was told to keep it about ten minutes. So I'll do that. Make sure I leave time for questions. But as you all may have heard, the US Supreme Court, or as you mentioned, on March fifteenth passed a decision specific to school board social media use. And the case is called O'Connor-Ratcliffe versus Garnier. But the real key issue is when does a school board member create a public free speech forum on their social media account um, such that a board member would be limited in their ability to hide or block comments? So many school board members use social media for, for both personal reasons and to communicate about district happenings. And, um, there is, this case in particular that went to the Supreme Court, what happened was school board members were posting about school business and people in the community were spamming or trolling them. Meaning they put two hundred and sixty comments up, the same comment, in a ten-minute period. And so the school board members blocked them because it was making it impossible for them to communicate with the community on their page or for people to be able to read it. So they blocked them. Those community members sued the school board members and it went all the way to the Supreme Court. And what the court held was that, and the argument from those community members was as a school board member and a public official, if you're talking about public business, you've now created a free speech forum. You've now created a place like a public board meeting where anybody can say anything they want as long as it's not hate speech or threats of violence or obscenities. So there was a lot of criticism and really derogatory horrible things said about the board members. And their argument was that they had a right to do that. Well, the Supreme Court said no, you do not automatically create a free speech forum just because you're a board member and just because you're talking about things happening at the school district. There's a test that you apply as to whether or not you're creating this free speech forum. And the, the test is two parts. The one is you as a school board member have to have the actual authority to speak on. It's a state, but that means school district. It's one, are you a state actor? When do you have the actual authority to speak on behalf of the district? Usually that will maybe be the board president if it is put in your bylaw. Or it could be a really specific issue where you've authorized another board member to speak on the district's behalf. So you have to have the actual authority to speak on the, on behalf of the entire district. And you have to be purporting to use that authority. So if you're the board president, that would mean you have the authority, if it's in your bylaw, that you have the authority to speak on behalf of the district. And on your social media, you're saying, as the board president, I just want to comment on tonight's board meeting. Well, in that case, then maybe you have, you are speaking on behalf of the district. You are creating a free speech forum where people, where people, you can't censor people's comments unless they fall into that not protected category, hate speech, obscenities, violence. Um, a question I usually get is, do you have to keep the comments on? No, you can have comments blocked altogether. You just can't pick and, in this situation, you can't pick and choose because you don't care for their opinions. So, um, it's if you have the comments on and you are acting as under state action, then it, like the case, um, you would have to put up with potentially trolls and spam and things of that nature. So you can see, most of you on your social media probably don't have the authority to speak on behalf of the entire district. And even if you do, like the board president, you're not purporting to exercise your official authority every time you want to post about, let's say, your child's graduation or your son kicked the winning, you know, the, the field goal, the football game. So this is the two-part test and there's a little bit more to it that I also want to share. So I'm sure you have some questions. The court also said that if you put a disclaimer on your social media page, it will create a disclaimer that you're speaking as an individual and not as a board member. It'll create the presumption that you're not speaking on behalf of the district and therefore not creating a free speech forum. So I have included on here sample language for you all. If you, I mean, you can put whatever disclaimer you want. The court didn't expressly say what the disclaimer has to be, but this is language we came up with that we thought was pretty clear and got to the point that you are speaking in your personal capacity and not as a board member. So again, the court did say, if you have a disclaimer, it'll create a presumption that you're speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the district. But there's two factors that could kind of eat away at that presumption and, and take you back into the category of state action. And that would be if the information you post on your social media page is about district business and only available on your page. So the example in the court was, now these cases dated back to when we had COVID. There was information about, uh, publicly available vaccines, but it was only made on a, a city manager's Facebook page. And the example they gave is, well, that information was only available on the city manager's page. Therefore, the city manager was speaking in as state action and created a public forum. So again, if information about the school district would only be available on your social media page, um, it could eat away at this, this presumption that it's your personal. it could eat away at this presumption that it's your personal speech. I would imagine you all have a district social media page where any official district speech is going to be there and not solely available on your personal social media page. Secondly, if district resources are used to create and maintain your social media account, that also can eat away at the presumption that it's your personal site and not the, you know, this speech of the district or you're not acting on behalf of the district. So that would be if you have a staff member at the school district who actively updates and maintains your social media, which again, I doubt that is the case most of the time. So that's, the basic framework is, and just to really outline this, step back a second. It is, there's a two-part test that you have to decide if you are speaking on behalf of the district. And there's a recommendation that you have a disclaimer. And then just FYI, even with that disclaimer, it's, it can be diluted if you meet any of these two criteria. A little bit of background, it was a unanimous decision by the Supreme Court. It was written, the justice, Coney Barrett, who wrote it, is a previous school board member. They specifically recognized the difference between being a school board member, being one of five people is different than if you are an individual, like a governor, a president, a mayor even, where you do have the authority to speak on behalf of your entire organization. You have individualized powers. And the court specifically said that when you become a board member, you don't give up your First Amendment rights to comment on district business. Because that was the impact of what the community members in that case were trying to say was, well, then you shouldn't be, by doing so, you gave up your ability to kind of control the content on your page. So that's just a little bit of insights. I have lots of additional insights, but I know we're really limited on time. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll pause the share, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
Board member Adiana?
I do. As, as we're hearing this presentation and as I hear, I don't know if I missed something, but the board requested this, all of the board requested this? We voted on this to hire somebody to, I just have a question, like, I already read this on my own. I've already put it on my page, that it's my personal page and my views are my own. So I, I don't understand why, no offense, F three, why we needed a lawyer to come and explain this to us. Could you please speak on that?
Yep, just like, like any board member can, a board member requested this agenda item. The superintendent and the board president consider that request and then decide if we should move forward or not.
And that is a protocol, the board president and the superintendent can decide. And I felt to be, to be fair, why not? And yes, it does cost us, but it costs us less her viewing on TV, we'll say, than her standing on the podium. It didn't take any food off anyone's table, so I felt it was okay. I did ask those questions to Mr. Ortega, I did. So I was clarified. That's why I thought it was okay. If a board member wants to have more information on a certain item, that they're not permitted or educate themselves, I should say, why not?
I just, I just want to stand, I just want to correct the fact that at the beginning of this presentation, it was shared that the board requested this. And that's why I was a little confused. I didn't know if I missed something, and that's why I needed clarification, because I was not aware of this until Thursday report that we were gonna have a presentation. And so, and again, when you, when, and I forgot who it was, that shared the board requested this, just for the record. Again, you just said it was board president and another board member, not the entire board.
Thank you. Also, just for clarification, the California School Board Association did, did make a recommendation, at least in the presentation training that we did with them, that a lot of school board members are asking for individualized training workshops because there's a lot of questions and confusion. This decision is a very significant departure from what the rules have been for the past two years and all of CSBA's trainings for the past two years. And there's an upcoming election, so a lot of school districts are offering these 10-minute trainings, workshops, just to open the floor for questions and to make sure everyone feels comfortable that they understand, if anything, it empowers and gives back a lot more control to school board members. It's, I think CSBA sees it as a real benefit and a real win for school board members, and so that's just, that's the context. So I do this quite a bit. I meet with lots of school boards that are asking for individualized trainings like this.
Board member Benavides?
I just want to say that I did attend the workshop that the attorneys gave to all the school board members. And I want to say that today, I really appreciate that we brought this and agendized this. Why? Because only school board members or representatives attended those, that Zoom meeting. And, and I really want, I think the public also, it's important that they know, you know, what's happening, especially at the Supreme Court level, because this, as we all know, it is, it's been a very contentious topic, you know, in, in, just, and because it is an election period. And I just want to say that I really appreciate that, and I think this is, it brings awareness to the community, so thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Gretchen.
My pleasure. Thank you for the opportunity.
We're moving on to item 12.2, presentation of update surplus property timeline. Mr. Ortega?
Thank you, Board President Rodriguez Peña. I just want to update the board, as has been our commitment regarding our surplus property. And so I want to outline three items that should have been addressed between the last board meeting and this board meeting. So number one, on May 5th, that was the last day for entities to make an offer on the properties. And by these entities, we mean that these are the entities that have a first right. And so obviously, we had to publish the board agenda, and so there it says, as of May 1st, no entities had made an offer on the properties. But I can now tell you that the deadline has passed and no entities made an offer on the properties. The second item is that on the week of May 6th, we were supposed to meet with DCG and F three. That meeting was held on May 6th between DCG, F three, and the district. DCG provided the RFPs that we are considering to release next week per the timeline that we have here. We had good questions. F three had good questions and suggestions, which were noted. And those recommendations and corrections will be made. And F three will, I'm sorry, DCG will resubmit those RFPs to the entire team, just to verify that what we discussed is now reflected on that. And then await the green light from the team. So that's number two. May 7th, which is today, we were supposed to have a resolution of intent to sell our property. But because we, as a board, decided, or as a governance team, I apologize, decided that we were going to submit a waiver to the State Board of Education so that we can sell our properties in an advantageous manner to the district. That waiver was going to request certain ed codes be waived. But because we did not know that when the timeline was created, that we, that as a governance team, as a board of education, we would move in that direction, that was put there just in case not. But because we did go the route of the waiver, this resolution becomes null and void. And so that's why you don't see that tonight. That would only have been a requirement if the Board of Education would have said, no, we just kind of want to do it the way the ed code stipulates. So those are the three things that have happened between last board meeting and this board meeting.
Any questions? Any colleagues have any questions? Board member Cruz?
My only question is, I recognize that we did not move to adopt a resolution for the intent to sell property. I see that it's contingent upon the waiver. The waiver isn't expected until July. So just, it's probably an obvious question with an obvious answer, but just want to make sure that we are on track and are expecting that based off of what has been submitted, that we anticipate. We still anticipate approval of that waiver, and so therefore, all of these items still appear to be on track.
Very good question. This came up at our meeting. I was gonna say May 6th, but that was yesterday. Came up at our meeting yesterday. F three, which is the entity that's working with the State Board of Education, did communicate to DCG and to the district that they have been in constant communication with the State Board of Education, that they feel very confident that we will be placed on the July board meeting. But she did walk away with homework to try to make a phone call to the State Board of Education to verify that we will indeed be on that State Board of Education meeting in July. So right now, it seems as we're on track with every single step that we have outlined so far.
Any further questions? Board member Benavides?
I have a question. So the RFP is going to go out, you said, May 16th, right? Correct?
Right now, we are actually thinking that we, because it says the week of, we're actually thinking that they might be released on Monday, the 13th.
And you said they made changes to some of the language?
Some very small recommendations from F three to DCG. We had just some small questions. Nothing that I would say that alters the RFP. Just small, small things that F three recommended be changed in the RFPs. But they were definitely small in nature. Like, for instance, is it South Baranca or is it just Baranca? For instance, hey, that's not the, I thought the resolution number was 22, not 23. So small things like that. And there were two recommendations, just for like to add like a layer of clarity. We joked about redundancy and attorneys, but they were good, and we all agree that they were good. And so, yes, those will be changed and they will be reflected in the RFP that gets released.
Okay, thank you. And then one more last question. Where will the RFP be released? On our website? Is there any other area, places?
Yeah, Natasha, please chime in here. The, yes, the RFPs will be on our websites. But my understanding, and again, Natasha, please help me if I misunderstood. DCG will also be advertising them in the regular networks that these kinds of RFPs get posted on as well, in addition to just our website. That's correct, okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Superintendent Ortega.
I have a question.
Yes.
It says here in our timeline, thank you so much for updating us on the timeline with our surplus properties, that one of the, I kind of read a little bit forward that a school board member would be included in the team to review the RFPs and decide, and so what does that look like?
Like, what do you, who that person would be?
Right, right. Was it going to be the whole team? Is it going to be just certain ones? Is it going to be the president? Do we have an idea who those individuals are going to be?
So the way the timeline is written right now, and DCG does believe that this is a good strategy when when we find it necessary. A strategy that they like is to actually interview some of the respondents to the RFP. That's not a necessary step. They say a lot of people don't do that, but that is a recommended strategy that they highlight that, hey, let's bring these folks in, right? If, if maybe we have three respondents that are kind of close, let's interview them. So the, the way the timeline is written, they are recommending that if we find ourselves in a situation where the Board of Education or DCG is recommending interviews, yes, they recommend that a board member or board members be part of those interviews. They have not discussed with us like the strategies or how that happens. So that would be, that would be up to the Board of Education to decide. Typically, that would be one to two max board members to participate in those interviews, if that's what we find ourselves doing.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. We're moving on to item 13.1, discussion of the Unified School District Facility Plan. Mr. Mall?
Board President, we are on 12.3.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, moving on to item 12.3, presentation of the Unified School Safety Support. Mr. Ortega?
Thank you, Ms. Board President, Yolanda Rodriguez Peña. Per a Board of Education member request, we are presenting an Azusa Unified Safety Presentation tonight. To recap, some of the things that we have done, are doing, and will be doing regarding safety. Tonight, this is in general functions, because this is a multi-department approach. This doesn't fall on one person. And so tonight, Norma Camacho and Natasha Jamal will be taking the lead in this presentation. And so I turn it over to Ms. Mall.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Superintendent and Cabinet. We will be presenting this evening the safety supports currently in place and some that are forthcoming. We have organized the presentation into three categories. Essentially, prevention efforts, protection efforts, and how we prepare for safety situations. So beginning with the prevention. So starting with the California Initiative of the Multi-Tiered System of Support. We look at, as a public education entity, we are tasked with educating the whole child, which is at the core of the diagram there. In addition to that, we have the academic support and our responsibilities in providing instruction to students, along with behavior and social emotional. So the first item in the diagram in the behavioral system that we see is the Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, which establishes clear expectations for behavior, includes predictable supportive environment for all students, intentional teaching and practicing, and reinforcement of expected behaviors, and utilizes restorative practices at its core. So in part with PBIS, you have a tiered approach in how those supports are implemented. Tier one being what is implemented for all students. That includes the school-wide behavior expectations that are taught, re-taught, established classroom expectations, cafeteria, hallways, et cetera. And then a continuum of procedures for encouraging expected behaviors. Tier two includes more intensive supports for those students who are not responding to tier one. Could include a behavior plan. Tier two supports are based in kind of identifying some root cause analysis as to, you know, what is at the core of some of the behavior and how to respond to it. Could be, you know, things like checking in and checking out with a trusted adult. Could be, you know, things like checking in and checking out with a trusted adult. Some increased opportunities for some peer mediation and supports. But again, it's about responding to two specific needs. Tier three is the most intensive where, you know, we might be looking at a modified kind of program for a student. Sometimes if the student has an IEP, might require a functional behavior plan and that type of thing. So some of the other supports in place. All of our schools, our community schools, all of our sites have a program specialist and community liaison. We do have one vacancy at one of our sites that we will be hopefully filling soon. They provide family and student and staff support. They increase partnerships and access to resources throughout the community and bring those supports into the school. And as was shared earlier this evening, the work that they do is in response to what they surface through a needs assessment. And, you know, a community school is really about being responsive to individual sites and what are the the needs of the specific sites. You know, the needs assessment that Gladstone Middle School might have might look different than what Dalton School's needs assessment looks like. They've also provide access to more mental health resources as well as social emotional learning supports. We also provide expanded learning opportunities for our students. So ensuring that students have safe places to be before and after school. We have before-school care at all of our elementary sites at no cost to our families, beginning as early as six thirty AM. We have after-school care at all of our sites through our partnership with Think Together. We also provide support for families who need it for elementary students on non-instructional days. Non-instructional days are days that school is not in session, but families may still need access to care for students. So that includes time during spring break as well as summer. And we do partner with the City of Azusa to provide access to our families as well through summer day camp with the Parks and Rec. We also have a partnership with the Western Justice Center. We have teams from all of our sites attending the ABCs of Conflict in June. That is offered annually. We have teams that attend ABCs of Conflict each year. That work is focused on, you know, community circles, kinds of practices. You know, how we de-escalate behaviors, peer mediation, and other restorative practices. Also want to highlight the work of our Azusa Student Union. Our Azusa Student Union has really been instrumental in providing support and implementation of community circles. Our student union is made up of students and led by teachers Mark Rodriguez and Michelle Rodriguez. They have led community circle trainings for parents, for staff, as well as outside entities like the Natural History Museum. They provide cross-grade level community building. They lead peer mentorship. We have students from Gladstone Middle School who are receiving mentorship, mentorship, mentorship currently with the Azusa Student Union. And just, you know, providing that peer-to-peer positive support. We also have a partnership with Second Call. Second Call would be one of those type of tier three, more intensive specialized services. They are a partnership. They do provide push and support. A lot of their work is centered on gang intervention and specializing in supporting students who need, families who need that kind of support. We also have many partnerships and contracts for mental health and counseling services. Care Solace is a service that is offered not just to students and families in Azusa Unified, but to staff and to the community at large through our website. Care Solace is a digital platform that connects families with any type of mental health or crisis support that they might need. They can access those resources digitally through the platform or connect with an individual person who can walk them through that process. We also have partnerships with Five Acres, Foothill Families, McKinley Children's Center, Pacific Clinics. Sierra High School has implemented through their LA County Office of Education Community Schools, a Margaret's Place, which is a space that is fully staffed with a full-time, five-day-a-week mental health therapist that is available for students. We also have our student well-being centers at Gladstone Middle School as well as Azusa High School. And we do also have a contract with, we call them NCAD, National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence, drug dependence, where we can refer students who need that kind of specialized counseling. Another component is our families. You know, a big piece of supporting students is how we support that family partnership. We do that through education outreach and providing resources. We have partnerships that have been connected through our community schools resources with Department of Public Health, Department of Mental Health, who have provided workshops and sessions for families. We also have a contract with Cabe, which is the California Association of Bilingual Educators. And they implement an educational leadership program for parents called Project To Inspire. It's a twelve-week course that we have had several parents and families graduate from that provides a continuum of courses that are centered around, you know, how we support our children through education. You know, good parenting, how we connect with our teachers, what are good questions to ask. So it's really geared to providing that kind of support. Outreach is also provided through our community liaisons, our district family support specialists, and our health and welfare program specialists, which is one of our nurses, Melissa Lofton. We also have resources for parents available at our parent centers, at our well-being centers, and through the wellness pop-ups that have been offered at some of our school sites through grants.
Now we'll transition to items that we've done for, to include protection of both our students, staff, and our facilities. So the district upgraded technology included the cameras that we installed on all of our facilities, which provides surveillance of all the perimeters as well as all the entry points. Through these cameras, we're able to receive alert district staff as well as all administration of anyone that entered our campus. If there is motion detected on our campus during off-hours or in an area that we know no one should be there, as well as visual surveillance that we could actually see if pinpoint of a person based on a description or a color of clothing that they have on. We've also took a boat. In addition to having campus aids, we transitioned last year with the partnership of the CCA and approval of Board of Education of adding the new position of campus security. We added campus security to Sierra High School, Azusa High School, as well as Gladstone Middle School. In addition to adding the classification, we increased the number of personnel as well as the number of hours. Meaning for those that previously were part-time, we made them whole, we're making them eight hours to have more presence on campus. We also, starting last year, signed the contract with Blackwater Security. We utilize them for both armed and unarmed services as well as day and night patrol. In all of our restrooms at our secondary level, which will be Azusa High School, Sierra High School, as well as Gladstone Middle School, we have environmental sensors in the restroom, which provides us two alerts. One, if there's an increase in noise as well as a chemical release. The alerts, the sample is at the bottom. In addition to receiving the alert, we also get an image of the door of the restroom that the the alert is coming from, as well as the timing, and we can go back and forth, zoom in and zoom out to identify the persons or persons coming in and out of the area. Fencing district-wide, we have increased the height of our fencing on all of our campuses as well as upgrading to the new black smaller mesh fencing, which protects against intruders as well as keeping our students and staff safe. We also have a partnership with Azusa PD to offer a school resource officer, I mean, school resource officer, Officer Garrett, who's at Azusa High School. At Sierra High School, that position is currently vacant, so we partnered with Blackwater to have armed security. Additional level protection, all of our classrooms and offices have the lock block, which is a rubber device that's on all of our doors, which allows all of the staff to keep their doors locked at all time. With the pushing of the rubber device, it keeps the door from closing completely. In a state of emergency, instead of having to find your keys to lock the door, you just push the rubber over and once the rubber over and once the door is closed, the door is actually locked. Now we're going to transition to items we've done to prepare ourselves. So this year, we adopted the District Safety Committee. This is the first year that we had this and we have areas of growth. But we partnered with our union partners. We also have site administration. The committee is also made up of both classified and certificate staff as well as parents and students. We meet, the meetings are public. They are virtually for an hour. Each member is allowed to submit questions in advance, which gives us the opportunity to bring the appropriate person to talk on that subject matter. And then we provide feedback after our meetings as well.
School site preparedness. This is tied to requirements in the education code in regards to emergency drills at elementary. They are required to have one drill per month, two earthquake and two lockdown. One of those earthquake drills is a district-wide drill that is conducted annually in conjunction with the Great Shakeout, where we are able to ensure that everybody's radios are on the correct channel and that sites are all prepared in that regard. As well as two lockdown drills at elementary. So that one drill per month could be fire drill, could be one of those earthquake drills or one of those lockdown drills. Their requirement is one drill per month. At middle school, their requirement is to have four fire drills, two earthquake drills, and two lockdown drills. And at high school, their requirement is to have one fire drill, two earthquake drills, and two lockdown. We also have a contract with InterQuest Canines that come out to our middle and high schools a couple of times a year. So this is our investment to date in student safety. Some of the costs are recurring costs, some are investments that we began last year.
So looking at items that are forthcoming, that is not included in the $10 million investment thus far. The Board of Education approved the contract with Sentix, which this will allow all of our staff personnel to wear a device where they can tap based on a sequence for either assistance in distress or needing for lockdown notification. This device will also be partnered with administration notification as well as law enforcement as well. Another forthcoming is our access control. We just finalized this RFP. This is where all of our doors will now be have the ability for staff to enter our buildings and the classrooms with just a badge and not to have a key. This will be also integrated with our camera systems as well as managed at the district office, meaning anyone at the district office as well can lock down the entire campus without actually being on site. And we also have our visitor monitor management system. I apologize. So it will start with our campuses, one being completely locked with a ring-like device, which is at the top image, where to enter the campus, you will push the button, a notification will actually be sent to the designated personnel. They will actually hear your voice as well as your image. And from there, they will have the ability from a touch of a button to actually provide you access onto the campus. From there, you will enter into the front office. All of our front offices will have what's called a visitor management, where a person will enter their ID badge. Their ID badge will be scanned, a badge, sticker badge will be produced out, will show the person's image that's on their ID badge as well as the designated area where they're going on campus. So then if you see someone on campus with a badge and it says, oh, I'm going to classroom two, but you see them all the way on classroom four, that will create an alert. And then that person that sees it can say, hey, we see a person on campus. Or just to be able to say, oh, maybe help a person that's on campus, you're in the wrong area. Let's take you to the appropriate area. Then we also have forthcoming our intercom paging. These will, we have one of the cameras clocks here, but this is in all our classrooms and offices. This will also be integrated with all the technology that we have, where this too will also provide alerts over the intercom system. We also will be able to integrate this with Sentix, where if it's a red alert, yellow alert, whichever color we decide, it will actually flash through. Then also through the VoIP system, you can also do paging and intercom announcements as well.
Worth coming. We also will be have a school social worker at each of our elementary sites. The school social worker's role would be to provide behavioral supports for students. Could include leading groups, providing SEL instruction, and, you know, providing some of that more intensive behavioral support as needed.
Excuse me. Just for the the audience and people that are listening, could you please provide what is SEL?
Social Emotional Learning. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes, what number interviews?
Yeah, I wanted to ask on regarding the, I know you, but let me go back here. And this question is for Superintendent Norma. Regarding the, well, let me just ask this way. So regarding the behavior of students, so and help me understand this. So I know like for HR, right? When we have a problem with staff, we usually have put together a performance improvement plan. And then we kind of monitor their behavior. I don't know if we do that. I know we, I've seen something we've done similar for students. But at what point and how do other schools address this concern? At what point do we say, especially when it's repeated behavior and it's a serious infraction, if you will, at what point? Or do we say, you know what? We've done intervention, we've done many of our programs, it's not working, right? And maybe they're just being disruptive. At what point do we say you're, we can't do, or do we say it? You can't come to this school any longer? That's, that's one of my questions.
So, you know, I don't know if you want to go back to the MTSS. But, you know, we do look at student behavior through a tiered approach. We, you know, want to provide the base instruction. And then if a student isn't responding to the base instruction, we would move to a tier two, which could include a behavior plan or a contract where there's a meeting with a parent. You know, as to what are the expectations going to be for the student? The student still does not fulfill that, we would move into a tier three, which could include different things. It's going to be based on what the behavior is. And, you know, how we respond to that would happen accordingly. It could be an alternative placement. It could be, you know, some intensive supports on campus. It's just really dependent on, on what the behavior is because there's
Mrs. Camacho?
A wide spectrum.
Can you speak on what is the expulsion process?
So, so there's some ed code violations that are an automatic, could be an automatic expulsion process. And that is a recommendation. So the staff would make a recommendation for a student for expulsion. And then that would be brought to the Board of Education.
So I, I think we've seen that in the bylaws, right? We've seen some of those policies. Maybe you could, we could get another copy just to have it handy because I think it's going to be good because we're having this topic. To refresh our memory, one, and then is it possible to get like account on, you know, have, in the past, maybe in the past three years, have we, you know, suspended or exposed expulsion of any students, what that number was the last three years and, and what, if any, have this year? And then I had another question regarding, and I think this is for Latasha. Blackwater armed and unarmed staff, how many do we have at each school? If you could just clarify that?
So Blackwater armed is actually only at Sierra and that's due to the vacancy of not having SRO. So we have no other armed for Blackwater unless they are actually, there's a partnership right now that if our SRO Officer Jared is on vacation, then they will contact Blackwater and then Blackwater will be the SRO at Azusa High School. As far as additional security on staff, Blackwater only fills in if we have a vacancy. So meaning if there's a vacancy at Azusa High School, whether we haven't filled the position or someone is absent, then we have Blackwater on campus. They're not just there on a daily, they're filling a need.
Thank you. Have we considered bringing additional armed staff on board with, you know, to fill in all the other schools? Is that's, can we revisit that at some point in the near future? Is that possible?
Clarifying question, Board, Board members.
So from my understanding, we only have one armed and they're at Sierra High School.
And the SRO at Azusa High School.
And the SRO. I know we were working on another SRO, is that correct?
So we are working with Azusa PD to get an SRO for Sierra High School. If and when that matriculates, then the Blackwater one would not no longer be there. The only reason they're there right now is because Azusa PD has not been able to fill that position to give us an SRO. But once they gave us an SRO, then the Blackwater armed person wouldn't, wouldn't, would no longer be there.
So, so what I know is the Azusa PD, they're sharp on staff, that's why. You know, but they are asking for it.
Right. So, so really technically, we only have one armed?
Two.
Two.
One at Azusa, one at Sierra.
Okay.
Police officer.
Is it, have we ever considered that for Gladstone? Is that?
That topic come up here and there. But when it moved into a middle school, we've never had an SRO at a middle school. So that's why we currently don't have an SRO at the middle school.
Is there any way that we can, you can provide us with the, because there's armed and there, is it just the gun that's the, you know, they're armed? You know, what's the difference between the armed and the unarmed? Is it just the weapon or?
The weapon and the clearance to carry that weapon.
Right. But the tasks are the same?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because, thank you for clarifying that, is because maybe we could consider having an unarmed at Gladstone Middle School. It's a thought.
Sure, sure, sure. But just for clarification, unarmed police officer?
Or someone from Blackwater or, you know.
Oh, I see, as a, as a permanent position?
Yeah, I mean, just something that maybe we could talk about as a, as a board and see what, you know.
Don't you have Blackwater there at Gladstone Middle School?
Blackwater, Gladstone Middle School there, mainly they serve as substitutes. So for instance, if we have an employee who's out on medical leave or extended leave for some reason or vacation or whatever, the Blackwater person will go so that they're not down people.
You mean if, if one of their
Campus security.
Securities.
That is correct. Now, on top of that, sometimes when we hear some volatility, we will have the campus security team and then we will deploy additional Blackwater for a short period of time until things calm down and, you know, we feel confident and then they get removed. But their main objective is to substitute when our campus security are out or our SRO is out.
Okay, thank you. And then I had another question regarding the sensors. So something we heard tonight was that, you know, they could smell when they're in the restroom. So have, have we had any incidences since we've gotten those sensors? Regar- you know, when, when maybe they're, they're triggered or something like that because there's a chemical. So if you could just kind of give us a little background on that.
So yes, we do receive the alerts. And for some restrooms, they are more frequent than others, but it has been able to assist the sites to be able to see when it's happening as well as as soon as the alert come to send security or personnel to that restroom to see what's going on.
And when they're triggered, do we see the student that's in violation of triggering those sensors?
So not so much the student of the violate, but we are able to receive the image of those that went in as well as those that came out during that time. But there's no camera inside the restroom, so we would not be able to physically see the act. But I know once the alert has taken place and administration have received it, I know it's been instances where they've talked to students. They've searched students, found a vague pin or vice versa, and then they addressed that matter accordingly.
So when the sensor goes off, who gets notified? Does it, is it like the teach, who, who is it?
Administration. So right now at the secondary level is the principal as well as all the APs. And we, all district cabinet has access as well, as well as Manuel and MIS and Brian Allen and Milti.
And then someone is dispersed out to the location or?
Yes, once you receive the alert. So like for myself, I could have the alert on my cell phone and I'll get a text message alert to say a sensor went off. It'll tell me exactly which sensor, which restroom and give me an image of the restroom door.
And then someone is sent out to look at the restroom or inspect? Okay. And then thank you for that. And then I have another question regarding the lockdowns. So when a gun is found on site, right? Because you don't have someone holding a gun, right? Like a perpetrator coming in with a gun. But when a gun is found on site in the bushes or something, does, what is the process? Is there a lockdown? I, I just need clarification on that.
Like a true attorney? It depends. But the, the, the real thing that constitutes like a lockdown is the presence of an imminent danger. And anybody can call a lockdown, right? Because we, you can be somewhere and you see something that nobody sees and with Synthix coming, that's even going to be more pronounced because now an employee will have that power in their badge to, to, to click and say, there's an imminent danger, we need to go on lockdown. So in a situation that you explained right now, there are multiple people. We do lean on Azusa PD as a trusted partner to say, should we go on lockdown? Talk that, talk that through because there's, again, at this very moment, I'm assuming in that situation, right, to your point, somebody, somebody is not holding a gun, there's not an intruder, there's a gun that has been found. And so as those conversations and those decisions, that's how, that's how they're made. But it is case by case by case and it depends really on the imminent danger that either the principal, the SRO, you know, somebody is feeling that would be on lockdown. But again, a lockdown can really be called because all eyes, the SRO doesn't have an eye on the whole entire campus, the principal doesn't have. So if somebody sees something that feels like an imminent danger, and again, more so now with, with the badges because we'll have that, employees will have that power in their, in their hands.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question, Latasha, the visitor management system that you said it's going to have a picture. So if I come in as a visitor, it's going to have my location, I'm visiting and my picture?
Yes. So once you slide your ID through, it scans it and then the ID, that's the picture that's on your ID will actually print on the sticker that you'll be able to fixate onto your clothing.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Board President. I have just a couple of questions on the District Safety Committee. How frequently does the committee meet? And then how many members are in each part, each of the stakeholder groups?
Yeah, so we have five scheduled meetings. We have representation from, start with the union partners. So we met with AEA and then they provide their union reps that they would like present. And then CCA, the same. Each were allowed two personnel, if I'm not mistaken. Then we also had Ms. Erin Kramer, who represented both AMA as well as special education to ensure that we had representation from them as well. The principals were allowed to submit names of interested parents and as well as students to be on the committee.
So when, when you say site administration, is that every principal from every school?
So we started with Azusa High School, Sierra High School and Gladstone. And we have elementary representation, but not an elementary student.
I'll ask my question in a different way. Are each of the schools represented by an administrator?
No.
So did I hear you say that Azusa High School, Sierra High School and Gladstone Middle each have an administrator on this committee?
No, we just have administration on the committee, but each administrator was allowed to submit the names of, seek interested parents and students to be a part of the committee.
So there is an administrator from, from Azusa, Sierra and Gladstone?
Not on the committee.
The reason I'm asking is if you go back to slide or the slide that says District Safety Committee, slide 22, it indicates union partners, which I heard you say two from AEA, two from CCA. And then I'm looking at the second bullet, site administration. So I'm trying to understand which site administration is on this committee?
So currently we have Mr. Fernandez for Azusa High School, who's on our committee. And I'm about to draw a blank of our next administrator. Oh, we have Ms. Erin Kramer, who's considered a site administrator as well.
Which site does she represent?
She's Special Education and District Office.
And then is there an admin representative for Gladstone?
No, and I will pull up the exact name of all of our committee members.
And Board President, the reason I'm asking is because we have heard a lot from many stakeholders and especially tonight about student voice, parent voice and concerns. And so I think it's worth understanding who the people are at the table and how each site is represented. So if you could be gracious and giving us a little time.
I totally agree. I, I have a question similar to what you're asking, but yeah, I, yes, I agree with that. I will have that for you. Just give me two seconds. And I do not have on my glasses. So for, so we have representation from, so AMA, which is Ms. Erin Kramer, her administration admin that was submitted is Ms. Stephanie Ortiz, which is MATP. Mr. Gabriel Fernandez and Ms. Erin Kramer. From AEA, we have Ms. Meg Sebella, Sebella, Ron Trussell, which is a teacher at Azusa High School and Ms. Margie Averson, which is at Gladstone Middle School. For CCA, we have Ms. Patricia Sanchez, which is at Dalton Elementary. We have Noe Felcon, which is at Azusa High School. And Sandra Arkenberg, which was formerly at Valleydale, which now is at the district office. We have student representation at the middle school. Should I say the student name?
No.
Okay. And then we also have high school student representation, three students from the high school. We have two elementary parents, we have two parents from the middle school and two parents from the high school.
And how are their parents and students selected?
Names were submitted to Mr. Superintendent Ortega.
By the sites?
Yes.
Thank you for that. My, my last question around this is the, the structure. So given that you have, that this committee meets five times a year and I'm, I'm hearing that the questions are submitted in advance so that they can be answered during the meeting. I think that kind of limits the real-time interaction. If you have to go a couple of months and then send in your question, you might not be able to voice your concern about something that happened today or, or in the past week. So I'm wondering how we can create space not only for questions in advance, but also questions in real time, because I think that's where we are going to be able to hold closer to what is happening at each of the sites. And I think similarly, that would mirror something we do at the board where if there's a need for additional information, that can be followed up at the next meeting. And perhaps even increasing, in addition to that, increasing the frequency of the meetings beyond five months.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Board Member Greer?
Thank you. Have a have a few things here. One can, can, would somebody be able to quickly describe? Miss Kamash, maybe, maybe you would be able to quickly describe so that the community understands. You, you used a, a term, restorative justice practices. Can, can you, can you very, very, very quickly kind of concisely communicate? What, what do we mean by that? What is our posture and our position when we say restorative justice practices?
So I, I will try my best to give a, a brief explanation of it, but a restorative practices are, you know, essentially when there is misconduct, there is something that is, that is broken in, in terms of whether it's a student to student situation, a parent, sorry, a teacher to student situation. And we come to a, a way to, to, to rectify that in a way that moves it forward in a, a positive way. So a, a very simple example would be, you know, if something is written on or in a classroom, you know, we might talk about how that breaks down the community of the classroom and how we respect the space that is, is shared. So a, a consequence for that may be, you know, if you've done, you know, some writing on, on your desk. Okay, now you would be responsible for cleaning that. It's a, a, you know, a, a way to, that's a very simple, but it is a, it's a much deeper work. You know, how, how do we begin to, to, to positively restore what has been broken, so to speak?
Okay, and we had second call in our consent calendar this, this evening and second call was mentioned here. Can, can we speak clearly and also, also concisely to what is second call? What is their purpose? What, what, what do they do? What do they not do? Just for the purposes of managing expectations from our stakeholders.
So they are a organization who provides varied support. So they specialize in gang intervention and really targeting those kinds of needs. They might interact with students in a mentoring way, building positive relationships for students who are marginalized. They are not a security entity, so to speak, but you know, when we talk about safe passage, safe passage might be, you know, a student comes and to second call staff and says, you know, there might be something occurring after school. They might be somebody who then might go to where something could be possibly occurring to help to try to deescalate that or intervene before something happens. And that occurs through, you know, could be a, a circle, it could be a one-to-one student interaction. So they, they provide a, a variety of kinds of counseling, very specialized supports for students.
Would they be expected, are they asked to or expected to, to intervene if there, if there was a fight that, that happened? Would they be expected, are they asked to or expected to, to intervene if there, if there was a fight that, that happened?
I have been on campus when something has escalated and they were between two students and were able to de-escalate the situation.
And, and just, just for clarity, to take it a step further from de-escalation is always the, the, the aim and the hope. There does come a point where we, where, I mean, even then, we would look to de-escalate. But there comes a point where, where it's, it's no longer about de-escalation, and now there's a, there, there is an actual fight or there's, there's violence that has taken place. Once that threshold has been, has, has crossed, is second call asked or expected to intervene? If there, if there were two students that were, that were fighting, let's say?
That's, that's when our security or SRO or, you know, would, would become involved in the situation.
And then just, just for clarity, kind of ask, ask a kind of opposite, somewhat opposite question. Are they asked to not, are they expected to not intervene? So if there was a fight that was happening, is second call asked to or expected not to intervene? Because that is not their role, the role that they serve on, on the campus?
It isn't, it is not their role, but I think many of them probably may try to calm students down.
Forgive me for pushing, just only because there's a, there's a difference between calmings. I, yeah, I would hope that, I would hope they would calm students down. But then sometimes we may cross the threshold of where there, there are students who are, who are swinging at each other.
Already entering. Yes, no, that they, they would not become involved in that. That would be security.
Okay. Can you also speak, real quick, on page 23, Slide 23, it said one drill per month, and then it kind of listed two fire drills, two, two lockdown drills. I, I'm not understanding what that means.
And so for elementary school, their requirement is to have one emergency drill per month. So for each month of the school year, they have to have one drill. That drill, that one drill could be a fire drill.
Ms. Camacho, I just want to ask one question. So required by whom? The district?
This is education code.
Education code?
Yes. So of that, those monthly drills, two of them at minimum must be locked down, two at minimum must be earthquake.
Okay, and then
Do more.
What, thank you. And then why, do we, is there any reason why middle school has four fire and there's one high school? Is there?
I, I believe the reasoning is that as students get older, they may not need as much practice as an elementary student, is I think what is kind of the thought behind those requirements. But that's just how they're outlined. There's not really an explanation as to why, but that is the minimum. Or, you know, what would be the floor? Schools can always have more if, if they felt that that was something that was needed.
Okay, and then regarding the digital locks that we would be installing, would, would we then not utilize the lock block anymore? Or would the lock blocks still be utilized in conjunction with the digital locks?
It could be in conjunction with.
Conjunction, okay. And then for the, for the visitor management system, I don't, I didn't write what slide that was on, but 27, it seemed, yeah, it's, that almost appeared, I don't know if that's like, maybe that's just like a, a COVID shield. That, that's not, we're, we're not talking about sectioning or, or, let me not, let me, are we talking about sectioning off a management area? So I'm, I'm a visitor. I, I hit the ring. I'm, I'm allowed to come in. But I, and I, I have to go through these steps and processes not to be brought into a secure area?
No, no, this is actually, that's actually our front office at Hodge.
Is that, it looks like there's a, is it just a plexiglass?
No, they still have a showed up.
Okay, okay, that's, that's.
But it's a built-in one, so it's not just a flimsy one, but it's actually built in, affixedated to the desk.
Got it, okay. And then you, we had said that, that upon entering, I'm a visitor and I'm putting my ID in and a badge is printed with my photo and, and everything. What if I don't have an ID?
We can manually enter your information in and then still produce a badge. And we can also have the ability to physically take a picture with the device in front of us.
Okay. And I would also, based off of the, the line of questioning, Board Member Bo, that, that you, you presented, I, I think it would be, I, I, I think it'd be worthwhile for us to, to look at and explore the addition of Gladstone Middle School Administration to be part of the Security Committee. I understand that we are already talking about the ways in which our, the site administrators at Gladstone may already have their, their hands full. And yet I, I, I still continue to, 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 to push us to look at how we might be able to involve them. It would certainly be a worthwhile use of, of time and resources. Maybe the last thing I would say, it just goes back to what I was asking about second call. It, it may, I, I wonder, how do we? Is, if ever, who needs to be, who, who might we need to inform? So as, so that there would be clearer understanding of, of what second call does and doesn't do? In some ways, I'm tempted to say like, if, if that's the case, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want students to kind of think, you know, someone's, I can do whatever because someone's here and isn't gonna, isn't going to do anything or would. I understand that it's complex, but, but I, but I, I am maybe picking up on, as I've heard various people come and speak, there may be a misunderstanding of expectations. And so I don't know if we have some deeper conversation to, to understand the, the, what kind of training and or expectations for second call to intervene in the event of. Don't, don't know if that's something that's just certainly not an option, or do we look at some, are there, are there some who can be somehow verified or certified to be able to, and trained, to be able to intervene in, in a, in a situation? But whether we look at that or not, I, I think that it would be worthwhile for us to ensure that everybody understands what the role of second call is and what the role of second call is not.
Thank you. Board Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, colleagues, for your great questions, and those are similar ones that, that I had. I, I have questions about security as well on the Slide 16. Increase in staffing allocations. What, what we've heard as a board is that the expectations, right, of security, which is our own, we have Blackwater, and we have second to call. Not just only for Blackwater, but I think it's really important that what you're asking, Board Member Grue, is also detailed of the expectations of all three. Because teachers don't know if, you know, do, do they do this? Do they do that? They have, they have no understanding of what their role is. I, as a board member, would like to know what strategy are we using? If it's internal, I, I would like to have that privilege to be able to like, know if I walk into Azusa High, where can I, where can I, right? Where can I expect security be? Blackwater, second to call? Because as of right now, yes, we're spending this money and, and it's, it's great. I think we're being proactive. But at the same time, there's a lot of overlap that is very confusing for myself. And, and if, if, if it's confusing for me, I'm, I'm sure it's confusing for everybody else. It's, it's also really important that as we move forward with the, goodness, what is that?
Centegics?
Centegics, yes, the
The badge?
Yes, the badge. No, no, the, the, the alarm.
Yeah, it's centegics.
Is it centegics? Yeah. I, I, I would, is, is security going to be carrying that as well? Is Blackwater going to be carrying that? Right, because of the fact that they're right where the students are at, right where zero to a hundred can go in a split second.
All staff members, all staff members will be issued a badge.
But Blackwater's not staff. So, so then my question, question is, is because they're not staff, will they, will we be able to provide that for our, you know, our paid contractor that we have on campus?
Yes, all sites will be receiving additional badges. So right now, we're talking about Blackwater, but let's also pretend like a, a sub-teacher. And so we'll be able to, to determine how, because each school will have more, how to issue those badges to substitutes, because that's what Blackwater would be.
Okay, and so you say all staff, so this would include classified and certified?
Yes, classified, management, certificated, all staff, all personnel.
Okay, and so if you could please, I, I, I would like to know how, again, what is the protocol that Blackwater needs to follow? What, what is it that they're, they're, again, what is their role? Their role, what do they need to follow, what protocols? Also to, oh my goodness, hold on, the gang intervention.
Second call.
Second call, right? What exactly are they doing? I, I would like to know exactly what they're doing. I would like to sit in personally, myself. I would like to be invited to see exactly what they're doing. So if you could please extend that invitation to me, I'm, I'm asking if you could please do that, so that way I know and understand what is happening. We, we're spending this money, so let, let's dive in deep. If, if we have our students and our, and our community coming saying they don't feel safe, then let's be proactive. And I, as a board member, would, would, would like to dive deep in, in that. And I personally would like to ask our board president if, if, I, I would like to be part of this committee if possible.
When the discussion arises, we'll, we'll discuss that.
I just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So, okay, I have several questions also. I was, we, we spoke about community schools. Since there's a community school in each school site, I, I think it'd be interesting, because I know community schools, each school, they are there because each school is unique. So why can't, why can't they have a safety committee? I mean, do they do that? Is our, is community school part of that? Because I know the situation is, you know, how do you feel in your school? I mean, if they don't feel safe, shouldn't they create something that's gonna help the parents feel safe for the, even the students? I feel that the students at Azusa High and Gladstone High, Middle School, excuse me, should have a safety committee with these students. Like, these students come here, they're sitting here, they're concerned. You know, they're, they're voicing their opinion. I think it'd be great if they were, you know, how do we select these students? Or to be, instead of just having the district one, is what I'm saying, to have them in the school sites. And I think that's what community schools is about, for them to help us out, right? And also, again, like, I, the way I, I'm hearing is they are concerned about safety in the schools. And I think that we need to utilize them in that way. And how do parents and students know about, I mean, we have great programs. We have, we do have great things going on. We, we really do. How do these parents know about what we have in place? How can they help us help their child with these things that we have, you know, in our district? You know, how do we reach the parents that, you know, do work and do not go to coffee with the principals? I go to many and there's 10 parents. How could 10 parents represent a whole school of even 200, we'll say, right? So how do we reach these parents? And how do we get these parents to come or have an afternoon meeting? And it's all about having to do a community meeting regarding safety, because I do hear many, many concerns with students and parents. Second call, who'll monitor second call to see that they're doing their job? You know, it's not the first time that I've heard, you know, what they're doing or what they're not doing. But who's in charge of them? I mean, is it our district person? Do they have a supervisor? Same with Blackwater. You know, they're there, we are paying big bucks, but wait a minute, that's our money. Are they using the money right? Are they protecting our children? Our children are not being protected. That's not good. I, I, as a board member, I, I'm not happy with that. I, I'm, I'm really not. I'm hearing these different things. And also with the restrooms, do they have these sensors? Why are they still smoking marijuana or vaping or whatever they're doing in there? Why is it still happening? Because I, when I first heard they were coming, I'm like, oh, good. I mean, that's great. You know, they, they can monitor them, but it's still happening. You know, how does that, I, I, we have great things and, and why are we still having these problems? What can we do different? You know, how can we utilize it and, and, and be sure that each of these programs are working the way they're supposed to be working? I mean, every time we talk about each one of them, they're fantastic. But we pay for them. How are we making, us as board members should know that they're doing their job? Rather be a person, rather be a machine, rather be, what do you call those things? The, the sensors or, you know, badges, whatever we're gonna call them. How often are we gonna look and see that, is it working? Are they working for us? Or we're just gonna just let them go and then things are still happening? I, I'm very concerned about our students and our community because what's going on. I'm, I'm, I know, I can't go home with the, with the child, but I want the child to be safe, at least in their school environment, because that's our job. That's all I'm gonna say. And I'll just one other thing. A discipline, I would like to see, or we can maybe just have a list of, you know, how many suspensions we have? And what is the, what is the rationale behind it? I mean, fighting, you know, I don't know, harassing, bullying. I, I haven't even seen a suspension to see what are the categories, you know? I, I, I think we need to see the number and see if it's changed, if it's getting better. Maybe next year we, I would love to see it better. The, the first year was a tough year for us. I know that it was a challenge, but I, I, I would like to, and we're doing everything in our power to try to fix things. But I think numbers make a difference. It, it'll tell us a lot. That's, that's all I need to say. Any, any other comments from my, from my colleagues?
I have a couple of things. Just if you look at the second call, their scope of work, it talks about partnerships with schools, how they serve as a buffer necessary for student parents. Provide the school with personal, a personal assessment of students and parents participating in second call. Parent follow-ups and referral to any necessary resources. And then it says tracking, which I think is important. It says parent follow-ups and referrals to any necessary resources. Establish a tracking tool for all participants. So I'm just wondering, and it says also create a revised assessment form. Is there ways that we could get copies of, you know, what that entails? Like maybe a, a template of a follow-up, just so we know what they're looking at or how they're tracking them? And, and then maybe with the suspension, if we've had any of these second call, write up any of these monitoring, you know, for the students. How many students have they?
I have all of their tracking reports and I can share them, so they list all of the interactions.
Okay, and it says also they provide a quarterly report to the school. Maybe we can get that on a quarterly basis, just to see the numbers. Thank you.
That'd be great. Any further questions? Thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Camacho and Ms. Jamal. That was great. So now we're moving on to item 14.1, no, 13.1, Discussion of Azusa High School District Facility Plan.
Thank you, Board President Rodriguez Peña. You will notice that this item is listed as an information item. We're gonna throw a lot at you in a short period of time right now. But this is to get the wheels turning in collaboration with Board President, Board President Rodriguez Peña. We have decided that our first study session in September will be dedicated to this topic of facilities. We're gonna be sharing three documents with you tonight. The first document is going to be around the bond, the Measure K bond. We are nearing the end of that. We have already been issued our fourth issuance. We have already been issued our fourth issuance, and so wanna just do a high-level report on the bond. Um, the second document is in response to, um, I'm sure we all, including the Board of Education, have received concerns, possibly from parents, possibly from students, possibly from staff, uh, regarding facility-related concerns. Whether that's HVAC, whether that's ceiling tiles that are coming down, uh, leafy, leafy, uh, leaky roofs, uh, phones, I mean, just a lot of regarding our facilities. Um, and so we have actually spent quite a bit of time talking about why are we, why are we where we are in terms of facilities? Um, and what can we do different? And so today, um, again, this is not an action item, but today we wanna present our first best thinking regarding a systematic approach, a plan to ensure that the big items regarding facilities are not falling through the cracks, and excuse the pun, uh, there. So this is our, 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 our attempt to say, hey, here's a ten-year plan by school on how we can ensure and communicate to the school sites, to the community, to the students, to the staff. This is how we're taking care of your school for the next ten years. Um, so that'll be presented, uh, tonight as well. And then, uh, we're gonna present the worksheet or the spreadsheet that you saw two years ago initially, uh, in twenty twenty-two. We have been bringing that spreadsheet every single time there's a, there's a, a contract to award uh, to keep the board and the community aware of those decisions. But we're gonna update you on where we have, where we've been, uh, for the last two years regarding that spreadsheet. The reason this becomes, um, this is an info item, and we we wanna create some space to talk about this is because compared to two years ago, there's a lot of new things. Uh, lots of information, lots of new things that have been presented to us that were not there two years ago. A, uh, we are selling four properties. That was not something that the Board of Education, none of us had that in our foresight two years ago. Um, we have a future Home of Sierra High School. We have a future conference and community center. Um, there is one more item that, uh, wasn't there two years ago, and Latasha will talk about that, but has reared itself like, oh, you, we better look at this. Um, and so the idea here in September is that as we think about the bond and its finish, as we think about this possibility of a ten-ten-year plan, as we think about all the items on that spreadsheet that we haven't even done or touched or considered, and we think about, well, there's potentially some, some funds coming because of of sales. Uh, and that September meeting lines itself pretty good to the timeline of the surplus property. And so we'll have way more information at that point in time. And so again, the intent today is really just to get the appetite growing, uh, and and put this out as as first best thinking. And so for that, I'd like to turn over to Latasha.
Thank you Superintendent Ottega. Okay, so tonight we will give you a preview of our facilities. Um, uh, we're gonna go over where we are tonight. Um, but before we jump into that, we wanna provide you an update on our bond projects. So for context, um, we've received our fourth and final issuance, um, for the bond. Um, this slide outlines the initial goals of the bond that was set forth in twenty fourteen. Proudly, we can see that we achieved all the goals except those that are highlighted in yellow, um, which are the swim pool, the new athletic stadium, the interlocking pavers, and the lunch shevers, shelters, sorry. Um, this is huge, as we can say with confidence that we can show our community that the bond proceeds were actually utilized on the funds that they actually voted and the language that they signed off on. So here, this presentation, we're gonna go over, we're gonna follow the same format that was previously presented to the Board.
So what is the interlocking pavement lunch, what it, what does that mean?
My understanding is that it was gonna be shelf covering for outside eating, um, but I don't have those plans in front of you, but that's my understanding of what that is.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, so now we're gonna go over the completed, um, projects as well as the projected costs. This presentation is gonna follow the same format that was previously presented to the Board of Education. Um, we start with the completed projects, then we're gonna go into projects that are currently in progress, and then those that are on the horizon. So here, the yellow, I mean, the the highlighted colors represent the same colors that correspond in the previous pyramid. Um, this design was initiated from the inception of the bond, so we're just following that format. Um, here, we're identifying the completed projects, what accounts for over sixty-six percent of the proceeds of the bond. Um, some of the items, won't go over all of them just to highlight. So we completed the HVAC at CMS, which is Center Middle School. Uh, we completed the roofing at Center Middle School. We also did the seismic study for Dalton Elementary, as well as Lee, which will help us with the modernization. We actually completed the underground utilities also at Center Middle School. Continue with the completed projects. We have those that are, um, in orange, we have the K twelve Ellington conversion. We also have the site survey for Murray Elementary, Center Middle School, Glasson High School, and Dalton. Um, we also have the HVAC for, um, the gym, um, that's currently at Glasson Middle School, but previously was, um, Glasson High School, as well as the HVAC and roofing project at Dalton Elementary School. Still continue with the completed projects. Um, we have the marquee that, um, is in front of both Gladstone and Azusa. Um, we have the Lee Elementary Roofing, plus the HVAC and Fire Alarm. We have the fields at both Azusa and Glasson that was completed. Um, the alarms at four sites, including Lee's Portables. Um, we also did the parking lot at the Gladstone's former Gladstone Street. Um, and we also in, um, installed new bleachers at both Gladstone and Azusa High School. And closing up the completed projects, we have the Paramount Roofing. Um, we have the Azusa High School Kitchen Lines. Uh, we also have the Magnolia Parking Monitor Expansion, as well as some preschool expenditures. Now we'll be transitioning to projects that's in progress. So these are projects that we currently have started, and they have not been completed, um, starting with Lee Underground Utilities. So yes, the project is almost near completion, but we have not received the final sign-off from DSA. So until we actually receive that, that project is not considered complete. We also have the Gladstone Middle School split of the HVAC unit that's going to be replaced. Now we'll be transitioning to projects, sorry, um, projects that are in the horizon. Um, so previously, when we, um, um, presented in front of the Board of Education, the Board of Education took a bold, um, position to say, we're gonna pause and utilize any of the bond proceeds, and any remaining bond, um, proceeds will be allocated to the three remaining schools. Um, and that will be for Dalton Modernization, Paramount, um, Modernization, and Lee Modernization. Um, it's important to note that these are the amounts that were previously allocated for those schools. And so we are consistent with those, but understanding that with the costs of inflation, of things increasing, these numbers are just projections. And with that, that is the update of our bond that we should be proud of. Any questions?
Any questions?
I just have a comment. Be being an active participant, myself, uh, being on the board for Measure K and this bond, um, and now seeing the fruits of of our, of the work of the community members who actively participated in this, and for the community out there who believed in this. And i- it's coming in into action slowly but surely. And just as board member, um, I can't remember, I think it was Rodriguez Peña or another one. Um, when it comes to to, uh, implementation in a school district, you know, it it takes a while. There's a lot of, you know, meetings and voting and so forth. And so being able to see this, um, actually, uh, the board before us being able to go ahead and implement this, was it three years ago, four years ago, or five? And then Yeah, two thousand fourteen, and now ten years later, we're seeing the actual work happen. And I know slowly but surely, it's it's come to, uh, you know, to to where we can see. And I'm speaking to the community right now. Um, I wanna thank you for for your support for Azusa Unified School District Board, the previous one. I wanna thank them and our board now, that as we keep moving forward, um, you know, we we want to, we would like to, and we're doing, and we're doing it here with the presentation, for our schools to have a more aesthetic, um, appeal, right? And it takes time. And I I do have faith, and thank you, Latasha, and, um, our superintendent and assistant superintendents for, you know, for this presentation, um, Latasha for this presentation, for all of your work. Because who benefits benefits from this is our students. And all our hard work, your hard work, um, for our students to have a nice school. So I look forward to speaking about the pools, about the fields, bleachers. I feel, you know, just about everything, how we can make Azusa look and feel where students want to take pride in the school that they go to. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
So, I I find myself, I was on board when we started the, um, this school one and and the vision. I I'm happy to see that we are doing what we promised the community. It was passed by a very slim margin. But what we promised them is what they got. And I wanted, I I wanna thank my colleagues at that time and the community for moving forward. And we have many volunteers helping us out, campaigning for it, and, um, being sure that we, what we promised them, we are giving them. Other than the swimming pool, that would be great, right? But when we get some money, and but but the majority of it is done. And I feel very proud of of that, of our volunteers at the time, and the board members and the staff that we have bring to the community what we promised them. And that's what I'm proud of. Thank you.
And now we're moving on to item, um,
Board President?
Yes.
I'm a little long-winded tonight, I have a couple more things to go over.
Oh, sorry.
All right, no problem.
I thought you were done.
I could be, naturally. Okay, so now, um, so staff has developed a superintendent.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
You know, um, by protocol or by law, we need to take a vote, and we're gonna continue after ten thirty. And I like to do that at this time, if the board agrees to continue after ten thirty, it's the majority rules. Board Member, clear.
Board, well, um, Board President, just a clarification. It's, uh, should we continue and till what time? It's a, it's a
But at ten thirty, we're supposed, I mean, we're supposed to stop at ten thirty, right?
So the vote would be something, as an example.
Ten forty-five or ten forty. How much time do you need?
That, that's what I was gonna
That's what I should, we should go here.
We have, um, two more, um, items to share, um, and, um, I can go as fast or slow as we need. I just wanna make sure the content is received for the Board, Board of Education.
Do we have, uh, a board member have a suggestion?
I I suggest ten forty.
Ten forty, okay, do I have a second?
I have, I have a question. So what happens if, um, we don't finish at ten forty? Carry it on to to
We could finish.
Yeah, we'll finish.
Can I second that motion, ten forty?
Ten forty, are we good?
Yes. We will finish. Okay, so staff has developed a ten-year, um, facility plan to address the current and future state of our facilities. This facility plan, um, provides transparency to the community, the Board of Education, and to our staff. The key areas of this ten-year plan includes asphalt, fencing, flooring for the classrooms, office, and multipurpose rooms, as well as gym flooring, HVAC, exterior painting, playground equipment, turf fields, and turf wings. These areas were selected as essential to keep
Are you in this one or this one?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna display.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, the suspense, the suspense. I will share now. Um, so while I talk, so these areas were selected as, and they were designated as essential um, to maintain the value of the investment of the district, as well as to continue upkeep of our facilities. And here we go. So here is the draft of the ten-year facility plan. This is a preview, um, and I'm gonna discuss some of the key components. Um, but a reminder that this will be our study session in September, where we'll actually have a deep dive to delve into every category. So, um, this is a, um, ten-year plan that indicates the current year, as well as the prior year. Um, this identifies for each site for the next ten years exactly what will be taken care of on their campuses. Um, one of the good things is due to COVID nineteen, uh, we received a lot of one-time funding, which allowed us to begin some of the investments, such as our S R three HVAC project, which is why we're able to start this during the last fiscal year. The goal is that every ten years, um, this will be reevaluated, and based on the plan, the sites will know in advance exactly what they can expect on their campus. So just to show a few, can't, um, go up, but if we're Dalton, they know exactly when their asphalt was taking place. They know exactly, um, the HVAC, um, and it tells you how many units will be replaced. We have our classroom flooring, turf wings, um, and if it does not apply to that site, that's when you'll see N A in the category. Um, this plan will help with also, um, budgeting and for us to be more proactive in our maintenance. Currently, um, the Board of Education, um, has the bold decision that every year, um, we, um, allocate a million dollars to deferred maintenance. Um, and in September, we could have the discussion to continue that or to evaluate more. Any questions on the deferred maintenance?
Board President?
Board President, I have a question.
Ms. Jamal, thank you for reminding us about the million-dollar deferred maintenance. Um, are we intending then to spend down that one million dollars every year, or to continue to bank it?
So the goal, depending on the, um, direction of the Board of Education in September, would be to, um, either spend down or increase it. Currently, we utilize Fund fourteen to help with deferred maintenance that currently takes place on our facilities.
Is Fund fourteen
That's where we transfer the million, so it's out of general fund.
So do we carry a balance of Fund fourteen, and then we add a million each year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions, but I I may not ask them depending upon time. So I'm just, let's see if we get through, and I'll ask them at the end if if we have time.
All right, we're gonna go to the next, okay? Give me one second. Two minutes.
I'm sorry, okay, here we go. So now we are going to, um, transition to our, um, our facilities worksheet. So this is a worksheet that we've presented to the Board of Education, um, back, um, last year, twenty, um, twenty-two. Um, this is the plan that, um, outlines exactly all the, when we did the facilities plan. So we start out with the what white means. So items that are currently white are items that the Board of Education gave us authority, but the project has not begun. So you'll see primarily, um, classroom modernization, um, and you'll also see the fencing upgrades. Um, for this category, this was originally outlined in the bond project. But we have also completed all the fencing upgrade of all of our facilities. Um, we also see in white fire alarms and also intrusion alarms. And we also have the parking lot expansion for our elementary schools. Transitioning to the green, green are items that were previously white, because the Board of Education gave us authority, but those projects have actually begun but not have been completed. Um, that is indicated by the date that the Board of Edu, Board of Education, I apologize, officially approved the contract for the project, as well as we provide the original estimate, and if there was an increase or decrease, and when the project actually started. Then when we go to our yellow items, those items were previously white, um, but they are now yellow because they, not only did they start, but those projects have actually been Um, but they are now yellow because they, not only did they start, but those projects have actually been completed. And then if we look at our gray items, and let me scroll down so you can see. Okay, so our gray items are items that we previously presented to the Board of Education, but we did not receive authority. Um, these are items, um, that were strongly recommended or in different categories. Um, but the one thing I wanted to note were the three new line items that were added. They are gray. Uh, because again, we don't have the authorities, um, to start, but these are projects that we feel are strong, that we are strongly recommending to the Board of Education. For consideration. So one is the Community Conference Center. Um, the second is Sierra High School's proper home, um, which will be the, uh, Slauson Campus converting to Sierra High School and the Central Kitchen. And the newly added one is the gym floor at Gladstone Middle School, which has been brought to our attention that it needs to be replaced.
I just have one quick question on that. Um, the reason it, that it needs to be replaced, correct me if I'm wrong, was because there was a leak in the roof?
No, the floor, um, just needs to, is, um, beyond its useful life. Um, for safety reasons, we need to actually replace the floor like we did with Azusa High Schools.
And so the idea here, again, we have this sheet. Here's the things that we've been doing. Here are things that we still haven't even started or talked about or discussed as next steps. Oh, but here's this ten-year deferred maintenance thing. Right now, the one million dollar deposit is not enough. To execute a ten-year plan. Good, the bond, uh, to Board, Board Presidents, um, saying. Um, everyone should be proud because that, that pyramid was not meant to be in its completion. The base was to be done in its completion, but the fact that you were able to do not only level one, but level two, level three, level four. I, I think that, that should be something to be proud. So we have this sheet, we have this ten-year plan that we may or may not like as a Board of Education. And then we have the sale of properties. And so, um, again, our intent is that. The study session in September to really dig into this and to have, start having conversations. Uh, because it's probably, as we look at everything. The board will have to make difficult decisions in terms of, you know, what gets done and what doesn't get done.
Yes.
Board Member, intervene.
I have one question. Latasha, did you, please remind me, did you say these numbers don't factor in inflation?
For?
For all the items that haven't been.
The projected costs?
Yes.
No, these are all estimates. These are all estimates based on the estimates that we provided back in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so then they, you'll have to adjust those numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so, and we do that when we bring the item action to the Board of Education and we identify the original estimate and then we show if there's an increase and decrease from the projection.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'll connect with you later.
Okay. Okay, I, I was just gonna ask a question regarding, I, I do see here it's a scoreboard. Uh, football, is that at Azusa High, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and the gray, but what about a scoreboard, okay, a scoreboard for the baseball side? I went to a ballgame, a baseball game the other day and I just walked out, I don't know what inning was it, I don't even know what the score was. I'll just look, well, they're clapping, I guess they're winning, if they didn't clap, I guess they're not winning. Okay, you know, someone tell me what, what's, you know, but, but not only that, the, the, um. The benches, they need stadium benches. I mean, they're higher. Cause you're sitting like this and you can't even see, see them. They're just like, you know, you don't get there, you're gonna get a seat. But.
Yes, ma'am. And, and so those items are listed, um, so we identify, um, install stands, press box, stadium lights. Restrooms, um, um, baseball, um, infield, outfield.
Are benches on there or did I miss it?
Uh, it's just a stadium stands, that's what's listed.
Oh, that's what they call, oh, okay. Alright, uh, yes, Mr. Greer, wanna say something to me?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I, I remember that we previously discussed an item where we moved that anytime you attend a. A U S C sporting event that we win.
Oh, yeah, I always do, this time.
So we don't need a scoreboard if you're there.
Okay, any further questions? Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on to item fourteen point one. Approval of memorandum of understanding between Azusa Unified School District and the Azusa Education. Association, Educators Association. Do I have a, a first?
Motion to approve fourteen point one.
First by Board Member Arianez, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Bo, any discussion? Seeing none, please, your vote, please. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item fourteen point two, approval resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four dash thirty-one. Decrease the numbers of employees. Can I have a motion?
I'm to approve.
Motion by Board Member Greer, second, second, Board Member, by Board Member Arianez, any discussion? Student Board Member, preference?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, place your vote. Motion passes five zero. Now we're moving on to item fifteen point one adjournment. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve fifteen point one.
Motion by Board Member Arianez, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer, any discussion? Student Board Member, vote.
Yeah, yes.
Colleagues, place your vote. Motion passes five zero, andele. I call this meeting adjourned at ten thirty-one. Wait a minute, hit my hammer.